What a great day to be at JAG, yeah. Less than two hours ago, I walked across the stage on Masters with Educational Leadership, and now I'm here. The main reason why I started teaching is with the kids. So all my kids are back there from the concert band. If you will give them a hand, please. I thank the board, President Bellman, and crew, College of Ed, everyone, my director, Dr. Sanders, I had Ms. Radisson get me here, and the infamous Mr. Coach Kevin Augustine. They say it takes a village, and at the lab school, we all work together to go through greatness. So thank you guys for the honor, and give the band, we have a couple other awards with us today.
Bring what we haven't seen.
So, yeah. Their names? We have Mr. Tomatius Moore, Mr. Killen Washington, Mr. Christian Henry, Mr. Chad Brown, Mr. Brennan Valentine, Mr. Jayden Delaney, Ms. Ann Walker, and Mr. Adams.
We would like to present... Good afternoon. Today we want to recognize the Louisiana State Law Association Mock Trial Championship Team. First of all, Representative Katrina Jackson sends this special commendation, and she says, "It is my esteemed honor to present certificates of commendation to Ms. Franklin Jordan, Breanna Franklin, Juanita Gray, Damian Watt, and Ms. Carol Malonsa upon taking the first-place award in the Louisiana State Law Association Mock Trial Competition. It is a testament to the Lewis community of the Southern University Law Center's contribution and commitment to producing the finest, most knowledgeable, and effective leadership in the field of law. I ask that you present these commendations on behalf of myself and the Louisiana House of Representatives, those that come members of the Southern University Law Center and the students who attend. Thank you for helping us show our appreciation as Lewis needs fine students sincerely, Katrina R. Jackson." And those individuals include a member of our board, Ms. Jordan Franklin...
Thank you all for being here. I just wanted to speak on behalf of my teammates and I. We worked very, very hard to achieve this obstacle, basically. We definitely came in as the underdog, and this was the first time that the Southern University Law Center has been LSU Law for the first, this is the first time in seventeen years. So I had an amazing group of people to work with over the past month. The competition was on March 25th, March 25th. We literally worked our... Damian both worked full-time. Whereas to go into two... From what our chancellor let us know, they recalculated the score about three times, and each time, Southern University Law Center still won. She's not here with Professor Shaniqua Gray, but she is without doubt one of the most selfless and intellectual people that we've had the privilege of working with. Her knowledge is just eons above anything that we could ever possibly, like, I don't even know the words to think of, but she, I'm telling you, we were on point. We knew every code of evidence off the top of our heads, whereas our competitors had to research things, and we were like, okay, we already know what that is because of the training that we've had because of the Law Center. So, Qian and myself are actually graduating tomorrow, so we are a testament... We are a testament to what the Law Center can offer for... So if you know anybody who's interested...
Okay, the next presentation is for the track team at SUNO. Will you come up, please? We'd like to recognize you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jan Plummer. I'm the head track and field coach and also the interim athletic director at SUNO. As promised, I brought my men's team with me this time. The last year we're here, we only had the women's team, and this time, we not only have champions, we have more champions. Last time was here, we had two champions, now we have six. For, um, uh, name check. For Ms. Arita Bennett, she's a national champion in the women's 400 meters, indoor and outdoor, also the four-by-four relays. I'm also happy to announce that Arita will graduate tomorrow with a 3.75 GPA. This goes to show that, you know, there's a balance between academics and athletics at SUNO. She's also my team captain. Over the years, we've been getting better and better. You know, at one point, we only had a few All-Americans. Now, everybody standing behind me is an All-American. Some ten times, eleven times All-Americans. We have a national champion in Janai Thompson. He's a national champion in the men's 200 and 400 meters. And, um... Out of about 600 male athletes, he was MVP, the most valuable performer for indoor nationals in February. Men's team, not to outdo the women, but you know, they came third at the indoor national championships with only four athletes. And this is incredible to me because we only had four guys competing against 71 other schools with 30, 40 athletes. We were able to pull off the third place. I wish we would have been second or first, but you know, we're a small group, but, um, to achieve that with only four guys, I think that's incredible. And I'm proud of my team, and with all the support we received from our chancellor, our administration, and our support group at SUNO, and I'm happy to announce that next time we'll be here, hopefully we'll be a national champion for our team. Thank you.
I have one more announcement. Last week, we were at City Hall, and we were presented with a proclamation from the City of New Orleans for excellence in track and field.
Thank you. Congratulations to Egypt Blue again, and we're gonna ask Dr. Demasane to just have a few remarks on some conclusions you wanted to tell us. Good afternoon, everyone. I want you to take a very long, hard look at these dynamic track team members here. At Southern University of New Orleans, our motto is, "We are a team." They're truly a team, togetherness empowers all mechanisms. Standing before you are men and women who collectively have a GPA of 3.5, with each individual not having less than a 3.0. So therefore, they are truly destined and determined for greatness, and hats off to each and every one of you. Congratulations. And they were also acknowledged at City Hall by the city council on last Thursday.
This is to ensure that we don't murder the names of the faculty without acting close to them here.
Okay, this first particular is for my assistant coach, Mr. Yuan Ri. I must say, without him, I have the success we receive, and I'm a governor without him. And on behalf of the Southern University assistant, I want to present Ms. Cusack. This is for me, Coach Plummer. This is for Janai Thompson. Again, he is a national champion in the men's 200 and 400 meters. This is Shanti Ring. Shadi's not here. This is for Janet Bolton, hopefully a future Olympian. This is for my men's team captain. He also graduated tomorrow with a 3.0 GPA at Eastside. Kamala Smiker. This one's a special for Mariah Robinson. She's not here. She has other engagements. She will graduate tomorrow with a 3.90 GPA. And the last one is for Ms. Arita Bennett. She knows this Arita is about 5'2", but she has a big ass personality, a big heart, you know, never stop, never give up attitude.
On behalf of the board of supervisors, we want to again congratulate you and ask you to keep up the good work and get to the 4.0. Okay, we move to item six. One action item A is a recommendation slash nomination, Dr. Robert Miller as Dean in marriagees, Southern University of Baton Rouge. Moved by Gadd, second by Dr. Toward. Any further discussion? Here, none in favor of the motion, but with the sign of eye. Those opposed, nay. Motion is approved.
At this, at this time, we would like to let him have his opinion.
Yes, sir.
Yes, he will say.
Um, Dr. Miller, who are you, sir? Dr. Miller, would you like to say a few words with us?
Good afternoon. I'm really at a loss for words. I'm used to seeing other people on it. I'd like to participate in honoring other people, but I'm not too good at receiving honors myself. I first set foot on this campus 52 years ago. It was February of 1965. I gave an interview, and it rallied the whole week I was here. So my first impression was that this was a rainy town. I went back and I finished my PhD, and I joined officially in the fall of 1965. When I came, things were quite a bit different from the way they are now. Essentially, you've had four people running the campus. You had Dr. William Clark, who was Dean of Education, Dr. E.C. Haderson, who was Dean of everything else, we call him Mr. Caesar, and Mr. Leon Nettig, the other, who was the businessman of that time, and Dr. Felton G. Clark. They ran the campus. Of course, things have changed quite a bit since then. Things have gotten more complicated. Southern University now has so many devices, I can't keep up with what's going on. But, uh, at that time, there was a young man by the name of Van Leeuwen White, and he was a fellow who could talk his way into anything, and out of much things. Could have been a used car salesman. He could talk a dead man into buying a life insurance policy. With his communicative skills, he recruited 13 PhDs in chemistry blacks between 1965, when I came, and 1967. And of course, that was quite a few at that time, because there were very few blacks who had PhDs. Over the 52 years, some way, I became interim chair of chemistry, then chair of chemistry, interim dean, and then dean of sciences. I never aspired to be anything other than a professor, but some way, I became those things. But my motto has always been, "The best way to advance is to do the best job you can on the job you're doing." So, as I said, I've always considered myself to be the least among beings, but when I look at the board package, it was, "Now, somebody's made me look good." So even the picture looks like I'm somebody. So, I just simply thank everyone who had a hand in making this day possible, all the people who made legislative proclamation, and who approved it on up the line to the Board of Supervisors, and I thank the board. So with deep humility and sincere gratefulness, I accept the honor. Thank you.
For those kind remarks, and excellence swing to me in describing your work and history, you're traveling some big shoes, and we hope that we can continue on that path and make Southern University the best that it can be. Thank you. Okay, the next item is item B, which is an information item. Mr. President, back down, will you speak today? Let's have no comment, sir. Okay. Yeah, I think we just delayed it till the next meeting. So moving right along, we are now at other business, any other business before this committee. We're the chairman of this committee, stands adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gates. And we do realize that we had athletics in there with our academics, but the rationale behind that was so that they could get their awards and their recognitions, and then they would not have to linger to, they could leave if they needed whatever things given. At this time, we're going to be entertained by Reverend Johnny Henry, who is the chair on for Facilities and Property Committee. We now call the Facilities and Property Committee to adjourn. Your call, please.
Reverend Henry, President, Dr. Whitfield, Mr. Fandell. Dr. Davis. Mr. Fox. Mr. Huiyu. Dr. Toward. Ms. Smith.
Present.
Thank you. We are now to adjourn. Motion to drop the agenda. Motion. Second, we will be checking after second. Next, we'll have public, any public conference. Any public conference. We're gonna go into item five, information item, just before we get Pride Project updates by our campus, by Mr. McClanahan. I just want to tell the chancellor and Mr. Lewis to re-apologize for not making it on Friday, but we're gonna really try to reschedule coming to New Orleans and visit New York. Senator Bishop, Russell Bishop canceled on Friday, and Ms. Ann had to, she had another schedule, and Eli had to go out of town, and so we're gonna reschedule and spend some time out there on SUNO. We just wanted to let you know, we love SUNO, too. At this time, we're gonna have Pride Project update by our campus. Mr. McClanahan?
Oh, the project update in your package. Couple items I'd just like to bring to your attention. One is the Southern University Wallace Bradford Hall. That project, which is right across from here, is about 99% complete, and the objective is to be able to use that facility for the, for the fall semester. Yeah, it's a dormitory. Another one is the John BK Library, and I know some of you are aware that we have had problems with the fire alarm system. The bid was open on May 2nd, and we're expecting it probably will take us to complete the project to October 2017, but that's one that we really need to complete because of ADA. One other item I would like to bring to your attention, Ms. Franklin, the childcare facility. Okay, that project is, we're expecting to build that project this month, May 2017, and the other projects, the status is really under report. And that's all I have on that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. McClanahan, what's the status of the little bridge that goes back to the dormitories for the students that was eroding? I talked about it two months ago, and I asked Mr. Eli, and I think I brought it to your attention, too.
Right. I passed that on my way up here, and it's still eroding. All right, it's gonna be eroding until it can't erode anymore, and somebody's gonna get hurt. That road is completely washed out, well, the little back road that we, I shouldn't say completely, it's like almost halfway washed out of the main road. The mayor and the city of Baton Rouge were draining the entire parish there, and it appears that these folks just haven't, they don't take that, put that as a top priority. Have you followed up on it, and if so, when, and what's gonna be done about it?
Okay, uh, we have one of the items that is top priority item, really the president placed in the capital outlay budget. It's not in there now, but we're trying to get it in there, is to obtain funds in order to address that issue, and the president made that his number-one project. In addition to that, Mr. Gilley has been working with the...
Is this, you're now trying to put it in? When HB 1 has probably already made his meander through all the committees and all of that, too?
Well, so this...
So that project had never been in capital outlay, so it's considered a new project, and typically, new projects that would take over two several years to facilitate, so we all work with facilities planning. So we are working with facilities planning, we're, and, and we're working with, um, uh, our legislative colleagues to try to get it in, in the bill. Uh, we have some, we have received some commitments that it will, it will get in. Not only that, that it would generate priority one funding going, going forth. And so, uh, uh, so we're rather optimistic that, uh, we, we will be successful in not only getting it in the bill, uh, but also, uh, receiving sufficient funding to, uh, to advance, to advance that project. This is HB two, so HB two hasn't been heard before, the, uh, the committee hasn't convened as of yet, and so we, we, we do think that we have sufficient time to, uh, uh, bring that about.
Mr. McClintock, what's Plan B when there's a life or limb, uh, involved situation that exists over there? I mean, the state of Louisiana, can I just let something as dire as that float around, or is it us, us being southern, that's dropping the ball on it? And I'm seriously suspecting that it's the latter.
Well, it's, it's, in my opinion, it's not us, because we have had a number of meetings, not only trying to get this into the bill. Uh, we've also met with Facility Planning, we've met with the Board of Regents, they've been out here a number of times. We're also looking in terms of any, uh, we've talked to some federal people, I know Dr., Mr. Giller has, to try to get the funding in order to, uh, to, you know, to, to correct that. And it's one of our highest priorities, but we haven't been able to, you know, nothing to come, told it to fruition. But we are tapping maybe five or six different sources in order to do that. Uh, if you recall, when we had the problem with the bridge itself, that we did go to the End of Emergency Board. And at that time, we were able to obtain the funding, which was, uh, I think about, I recall about three or four hundred thousand dollars. But we're looking at every avenue, because we are aware of the problem and how, you know, how serious it is.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Mr. Geller, have a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I see as though that you-
Baton Rouge is flowing through, that they have part of the property of the liability of what's happened to this bridge. So they have to absorb some liability of that, so they need to be put on notice. But because of the direction of draining the city, it causes harm and possibly life or death to people at Southern University. So it needs to be redirected or it needs to be repaired, and they need to be a part of the process and let the state know that the, that system is creating a problem. And until you identify that, you know, it's nothing that's gonna happen. But you have to indicate that in this, in this context of resolution to them, that it's, it's creating damage and the possibility of life could be lost because of that action by the city of Baton Rouge. I just have a comment.
Let me thank Mr. Patol, uh, thank you, Mr. Patol.
You need to thank me for talking about- You got to understand, this is, we, uh, we have to, we-
I didn't hear that.
Well, I know he's not finished. To his question, did he, uh, did we not think he makes a good point? Have we done that with Baton Rouge?
Not to my knowledge. Not a resolution. I think a resolution probably from this board may, it's just my suggestion. It might be a good idea, I mean, um-
I'm, I'm not on this committee, but I'm sure Mr. Fandell would probably help me. I'm not on this committee, I'd like to make a, well, I can't make a resolution. I could do, you know, I'll wait to the board. I can't make a motion. I'm not on this committee. A motion, a resolution from the board asking the city of Baton Rouge to do what Mr. Patol just said, and that is to come in, send an investigative team, and it, from an emergency standpoint, to immediately investigate the dire situation, uh, with the road leading to our dormitories.
The vote, no, go ahead. Uh, Committee Chair, perhaps we give him three minutes to make the resolution, and I'll make the motion for him on that. He's already said it, so.
So you're voicing the same sentiments of that motion?
That's correct.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor?
We need to get a second.
We need to get a second for the motion?
Second.
It's been properly moved, second? Motion passed. That we have that resolution devised and put out.
Thank you. At this time, any more comments, questions? We'll have, uh, an, an update on the Sumo lighting project.
Okay. Thank you, Reverend Henry. Uh, Mr. Giller sent his regrets, he was not able to be here today, his daughter's graduating from Loyola, she's getting an MBA, so, uh, but anyway, he sent the information along with me, Reverend Garrett, at the last board meeting, you, you know, you indicated to us the concern that you had about the portable lights on the, uh, Sumo campus. Uh, since that time, Mr. Giller has gone to Sumo, to visit the Sumo at least four times, uh, then two times during the day and twice at night. He has taken an inventory of the entire campus to determine the number of lights, external lights that were out. Also, while he was there, while he was there, uh, he was asked to look at the library. And he has spoken with Mr. Sean Lewis and Mr. Julian Lenthrow on that campus. And they have identified about six of the lights that were, that are out for the library, and they have also issued a purchase order to complete those, uh, uh, get those lights back on. In addition to that, the temporary lights, when he went, he found out that the, there were five sets of temporary lights, and they were about fifteen hundred dollars per month, uh, that they were paying. But what he did, he expanded that to look at the entire campus in terms of all the lights that were out. And he identified about, probably about, s- about a hundred, and, well, totally with the library, about a hundred and seventy-three lights. He has, uh, actually developed, uh, priority, uh, phases in order to make, do the correction. I spoke with Mr. Lenthrow and Mr. Lewis, and they have indicated to us, one of the priorities would be to get rid of the portable lights first. But also to move on based on what they have, you know, what they came up with, and to look at what it would cost to fix all the lights. They said to me, well, in order to fix the, to get the portable lights, uh, removed and with, uh, permanent lights, it'll be between fifty-five and seventy thousand dollars. Mr. Lenthrow said to me that he would start making some of the corrections this, uh, year, out of this fiscal year's budget, and he will work with the others, uh, you know, during next fiscal year. But the priority would be to remove the portable lights. In addition to that, he identified, uh, some other areas that needed lighting, and he has also, uh, uh, determined a number of lights, and he's getting estimated costs on what it would, need, what's needed in order to, uh, replace those lights. And if you have any other questions, uh, Mr. Lewis is here today, and he will be able to address any additional questions that anyone may have. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I would like to-
Well, I just want to make a statement, and I want to make it to the Chancellor, that she can carry a message back to Sumo campus for me. I value my integrity, and I think one thing that I have a reputation for is I pledge to each Chancellor and the President Chancellor that I would never come to a meeting and throw something on them without them being warned about it. So the, what I practice is, if I hear something wrong on that campus, I talk to the Chancellor.
Yes, sir.
I talk to the Chancellor of Sumo about the problem we had, and I've taught her, I've brought it to our Chair of Facilities, and I even spoke about it in this board meeting. But I want you to take a message back, that I don't take it lightly when someone wanna disparage my reputation. I have never, in almost twenty years I've been on this board, I have never asked anyone to give anybody a job. My wife worked for this school when I was chair the first time, and, uh, I've written, I've never, I don't play games that way. When you see me asking questions, it's out of concern. When people come to me, many people feel that they can't go to certain people, but they come to board meeting members, and I think that's what we're here for. Here's to facilitate answers, solve problems. So that's what I'm trying to do, and I appreciate Chairman, the job that you've done, uh, Madam Chancellor, I, I appreciate you, and she'll tell you, we have a good, open conversation with each other, and I appreciate that. And I'm saying, that's the message I want, that's, that's what I'm about. I'm about fixing things, we have too many broken things on this campus that are allowed to go broken too long, and for too long, we've had people give us excuses and nothing happened. So that's all I'm trying to do, get people to get up off their blessed assurances and do the job that we pay them to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend Garrett. Any more comments? Just before we move on, I just want to, uh, as we attempt to all of our, uh, facility problems, as Tony has spoken, the bridge and, uh, the lighting at Sumo, we have many more. I would like to, uh, I thought I had a picture on my phone of the example of what I'm gonna propose right now, and we'd appreciate if you could go to- With a garbage can, and it's on the lean. Okay? One thing with a garbage can on the lean, it's the first thing you see when you come in, and it's the last thing you see when you leave out. And what it does is, it, it helps us to put the trash in when we're going into the subdivision or if we're coming out, so we won't have it on our grounds. What I would like to do is ask that we, as I gave you that picture, example, that we would put as many garbage cans as we can afford around the campus. So that those who have trash in their hands, they can put it in the garbage can, and we can properly dispose of the trash. Starting from the Jones Hall area, and then getting a lot of calls that it's pretty, uh, bad in that area, sometimes it looks kinda ghetto, we want to address that. And it's a cheap way to keep the campus clean, even if there's those who just insist on putting garbage on the ground, there will always be those who will pick it up. So I'll give you a pretty good example of that. As we move on to other business, do we have any other business? Yes, Mr. Chair. Back again, Mr. McClintock. Uh, about three, three weeks ago, maybe a month or so ago, there were bids open to repair the roof of the window. Maybe you were what I'm talking about. And about eight architectural firms applied and bid to fix that top of that window. I represent eight parishes over there, there are a couple of architectural firms over there, I was contacted by several of them who applied, and told me that they didn't get the job here, I said, well, maybe they did work. They said, no, we had the lawyers doing it. So my question to you is, what's the protocol up here at Southern University as to when there's a bid, particularly a multimillion dollar bid? Uh, is there one person that makes that call, which architectural firm gets there? And I'll be more frank, just straight out with you. Mr. Eli Giller made the call, and it's, he made the call of the, the same firm that we keep hiring, who has a lot of work in the state, and they can't ever get to our work. My question to you is, why isn't, why is, why is one person making that call, Mr. President? I guess you should address that. And two, why not a committee of folks? And we should go with who's the best and who's the cheapest, I should say. And I think one person making that call creates a serious problem. And if the answer to this question is, yes, one person makes that call, then I respectfully ask by the next board meeting that you, who put together some type of evaluation that I can ask Madam Chair, that we come up with an alternate way of having folks select architects, okay? I just think, I think having one person do that creates a problem. So to answer the first part of the question, is that the case, one person makes the call on the architect? That's yes or no, when you can explain. Uh, I would need you to check that, uh, Mr. Chair.
President, did you know? Darian Law is a problem, but, understand, but Darian Law is a serious problem, and a serious problem, but you don't know, and you don't know. And you, let me tell you what happens. Let me tell you who makes the call. He does, one person. He does.
Can I? Uh, Mr. Clayton.
My, go ahead.
Okay. Normally, the item is put out on bid.
Got you.
Right, and then when the bid comes in, we normally look at it in terms of the lowest bidder. Uh, and, you know, whoever comes in with the, uh, with the lowest bid. It's my understanding that, and I, and I understand what you're saying, and I will definitely look into that. Uh, I didn't think it was just one person, to my knowledge, is whoever comes in with the lowest bid. If there is one person, I can assure you that I agree, that we will, you know, correct that, it makes certain that we have a community-
You wouldn't know if there's one person. I can call-
Can you, can you find out today?
I'll do that, all right.
And, Mr. President, if it is one, which it was, will you fix that?
Conference contract, makes a misunderstanding. We have one system representative who, who, who represents the system at, at meetings that's facilitated by Facility Planning. Yes, State Facility Planning, given most, if not all, bids of, of that, of that magnitude, the state actually, uh, identifies, uh, the, the contractor who's gonna do the work. Usually, the state has a committee of three or four, of that three or four, one university representative have a vote as pertains to, to that project. In our case, that one person, as you identified, is Mr. Eli Giller. Now, can I, can I add to that?
Yes.
Correct that.
You're, you're one percent right, every university has a person.
Yeah.
And the state recognizes what that one person from Southern recommends. My issue is, to me, there's a flaw that that one person, you got, it ought to be the lowest bid for Southern, it ought not be who that person-
I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, and we will, we will, and I guess that's what my initial statement was. I'm not necessarily sure of the process that led to the, uh, one, uh, contractor being identified who was not the lowest bidder, and that's what I would want to, uh, follow up on for you, Mr. Clayton.
And only respectfully ask that we come up with a protocol with a committee, and that you guys evaluate, not, not one, I guarantee you, you're gonna come up with that. And I don't wanna be the one that have to come back to you guys, because some bunch of architectural firms calling my office or calling me, because they know I'm on the board, that's something you guys ought to be on top of.
Right, but let me say this, uh, Mr. Clayton, now that, when we think in terms of facility planning, Mr. Giller did come to me, and he had the list, like the president's saying. I was thinking terms of bids on this campus, but he has a list, and he showed me exactly where he voted, uh, and how he voted. But he was, effectively, he told me it's three other individuals on that list. And, uh, you know, we probably need to look at the committee, I'll get with Facility Planning, but he actually said to me that the way it's set up, he only gets one vote, and I think it's out of three or four people.
He gets one vote from Southern, or he should get one vote, it's whoever that person picks. I'm telling you, the firm that, I did my homework on it, has a lot of work up here, and I wanna know why they keep getting picked, but they, you know how far they are, how far they are behind on all their work? So I don't know why they keep getting chosen. And then I just hope you guys got a better process in place than one person making that call, and report back to me, this one board member, maybe the rest of them don't wanna know. But I wanna see a protocol in place that it's fair, and that everybody gets a fair shake at this deal, and that it's in the best interest of Southern every time, not the same architectural firm. Check the record.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd just like to add to Mr. Clayton's request, Mr. Clayton, will also clarify in response, that if it's, if it's a public work, it's a building project, we are responsible, uh, we are, we are bound to select the lowest responsibly bidder, in, 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 in a, in a public work, in a building project. However, I want you to confirm this again.
Yes, sir.
But I do believe for the selection of an architect, you do not consider any, you see, you consider only qualifications, because there's already an established fee scale that's in law, that applies to you, to the, to, to what we commonly refer to as the design team. I know that's the way for, for political subdivision, because I do that extensively for one of my clients, but I wanna make sure that that's the same, and I'm almost certain that it is the same for the state, and I, I, so if you please-
Yes, sir.
Make sure that's a part of it.
Okay.
I, I have one. When you set up your protocol, whatever protocol you're using, please make sure that the chair is informed of whatever is going on. I do yield, uh, to whoever the chair of that committee is, but I also would like to be informed as the chair. Thank you. Thank you.
Add, I hope that the entire board will be informed.
Let me just make myself clear. Whenever there is anything that's on agenda or is to be placed on agenda, I ask to be notified and to be informed, and I always try to get to every board member and at least let you know that it is in process. So I know a lot of times you're very busy, uh, and you don't have time to sit at emails, but I make sure I at least give you a text message. So that text is going to come up on that phone. So just watch your texts and watch for my name. Thank you.
I always get your text, Madam Chair.
I know. I make sure. So that's why I ask to make sure that you inform the chair. Thank you.
Have any more? Make sure we inform the chair and the vice chair.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Reverend Chair. I'd like to say that on last night, whenever I come to the campus, I always have a chance to drive around the campus. Want to commend, um, uh, the president, the staff here, the lighting here, just about all the lights are up on campus. Especially, I noticed last night at the Law Center, every light on that building, Chancellor Pierre, it's been lit up. It looks like a totally different building. So we do it as a result of safety here, and it's just the right thing to do. So we just want to thank the president and staff for that also.
All right, thank you. Any more comments? Other business? Seeing that there's none, need a motion?
Motion.
It's been properly moved. Second? Doesn't have to be second.
Thank you.
Mean the jury.
Thank you. And at this time, we will have Attorney Rutledge with Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Who called the Finance Committee to order, Mr. President, will ask for roll call vote.
Yes.
Not a vote, roll call, please.
Yes. Attorney Rutledge here. Mr. Gilery.
Yes.
Reverend Gatt.
Yes.
Reverend Henry.
Dr. Tarver.
Present.
Mrs. Smith.
Present.
You have a call, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Move to item number three, entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda. Been moved and properly second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll go now to action item five A, request approval to add clinical education fee, speech, language, pathology, and audiology on the Baton Rouge campus. Mr. McClintock?
Thank you. The fee that is being requested today is a one-time fee, and it affects both the undergraduate and graduate students. The undergraduate fee is $171, and the graduate fee is $339. I've gone through and prepared a calculation to see the amount of the fee, and the amount generated for the undergraduate fee is going to affect about 25 students, and the total dollar amount would be $4,275. And the graduate fee, uh, 25 students, about $8,475. It's my understanding that these students are required to pay these fees anyway, but what they are trying to do is to be able to use their financial aid in order to assist them with the fees. And, uh, it's, it's the fact that it's a requirement, I would, uh, recommend approval.
Any questions? Any questions regarding, uh, action item five A? Is there a motion? It's been moved and, uh, by Mr. Tarver and seconded by Mr. Clayton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Action item five B, request approval of a student self-imposed fee at Sussler. Dr. Ellis?
Good afternoon. You have a number of, uh, student imposed, self-imposed fees listed. There are actually four, one new, and, um, three fees that we're requesting that they be increased. One fee is the transportation fee. We currently have a shuttle that takes route, that provides routes to our, uh, students from the downtown campus to the main campus and also our education students. We are in an effort to expand our services, uh, to those students and to solidify our budget relative to that effort. We have asked students to look at increasing fees, uh, about $5 per semester. Uh, in addition to that, we have three increase, proposed increases to our SDA intramural fee and athletic fee, again, to solidify the budgets in those areas as well to expand some of the services for our students. The fees were voted on about a month ago by our students and passed.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? Is there a motion?
A move.
Been moved by Mr. Clayton and seconded by Dr. Tarver. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. We'll go now to, uh, item six, which is an informational item, interim financial status report as of April 2017 for the system. Mr. McClintock?
Uh, we. Financial status report is, uh, for the general fund for all campuses. And basically, the report indicates the amount of revenue and expenditures for each campus and how it compares with the budget. Uh, the, for all the campuses, the, uh, revenues have been, expenditures have been adjusted so that we will, uh, be able to end with a balanced budget. If you look at the report, for most campuses, statutory dedicated fees is basically lower than what it should be at this time, but it's, we have, uh, since we prepared the report, those dollars have, we have received those dollars, and the percentages, it would be higher. We don't expect a problem with the statutory dedicated fees. We are still looking at the tobacco funds. The, uh, revenue collection is down. So, uh, we are actually, and that's, those funds go to the Ag Center, and we are keeping an eye on those dollars to see if we will have to make some adjustments in order to balance the budget. Otherwise, all the, uh, campuses are spending within the budget at this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. McClintock. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll go to item seven. Is there any other business that come before the committee? Yes, sir, Mr. Clayton.
Mr. Rutledge, I bring this before your committee because I'm thinking maybe finance or money can fix it. But I remember thirty-some years ago, when I was in my early twenties, when I had on my captain gown and I walked into the Minidome, and I heard Dr. Woodfield Daddy say, "Turn your cell phones off. This is a solemn and dignified occasion." And at that point, I knew, man, I'm about to graduate. So I was late getting to the graduation, but I walked in from the audience, and today it wasn't dignified. Last time I was up here, my fraternity brothers were dancing on the stage, and Dr. Belton, I think your people have lost control of graduation. And I'm respectfully asking you as a board member that a graduation is a dignified and a solemn deal, and it should be that way. And I remember Ms. Flood did it when we were there, and it was done properly. I'm saying to you that progressively, these graduations are becoming a sideshow. And I hope, I'm not offending anybody, but parents are coming up here to see this dignified mat. And when your dad said that, I still remember that to this day. And when I peeked my head in that today, I was like, oh, my God. Kids walking off, no benediction, just, I mean, it's just something about that is not, in keeping the spirits of what Clark, um, Dr. Clarkham talked about back in the day. So I say that on other business, because if it takes money to fix it, Mr. Rutledge, then we need to put, hire somebody to, to go and do it. Do you think I'm right with that, or is just Tony Clayton running off again?
No.
No, say nothing, Mr. Rutledge.
Well, I think all of us, uh, expressed, uh, some misgivings about some of the things that took place at graduation, particularly towards the end, but I just don't know that this is a, a matter for finance. I'll defer to the chair as to, uh, maybe some conversation with Dr. Belton and, and having this address going forward. Would that be okay with you, Mr. Clayton?
Thank you. With permission from the board, I would like to, uh, go into a conference with Dr. Belton and his staff, and then I'll return the, uh, results to you.
Yes, ma'am.
If it's just, whatever, I, I will. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, any other business?
Tell you right now, I ain't scared.
I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Attorney Rutledge. And at this time, we will proceed with the Personnel Affairs Committee. I am met with, uh, Attorney Patrick McGee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Y'all ready? Personnel Affairs Committee will now be called to order. Roll call vote, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Attorney McGee.
Here.
Reverend Gatt.
Here.
Attorney Clayton.
Here.
Dr. Gaines.
Here.
Reverend Henry.
Dr. Tarver.
Mrs. Smith.
Present, and the other two are present.
You have a call, sir? Chair, now entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Do we have a motion? Yes, sir.
I was looking at this and something caught my eye.
What was that, sir?
It says, you know, we opened up the invocation and went over, we got the yawn again. Is it called an invocation?
An invocation. Probably do so. Oh, no, 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 no. The Lord's right-hand man just spoke to me. I looked up, the wind started blowing.
Don't talk about the benediction.
All right, I, I apologize for the dis, for the disorder. We have a motion at a second, and I don't know who moved it or moved forward or seconded. I hope you guys caught it. Outstanding. All in favor say aye. Any opposition? Hearing no opposition, motion passes. Number four, public comments. Dr. Miller.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Attorney McGee, members of the board. I come to you as Secretary of the SUVR Faculty Senate and also a member of the Faculty Senate Finance Committee. And I'd like to address item five C, salaries. And I'm not here to oppose the salaries that are being recommended, but simply to say where that the faculty doesn't have a clear idea of exactly where these salaries fit in terms of the big picture. And I'd like to say that, uh, it was about a year ago.
Collectively or?
Well, I'm, I'm going to get to that.
Okay.
Collectively, yes.
Yes, sir.
To answer your question. But it was about a year ago that the, uh, leadership of the Faculty Senate of all five campuses, and we have here today someone who worked with us there, Professor Sonia Hester and I and other members of, of the Senate leadership of the various campuses, worked on an assessment that was, uh, intended to give us an idea of the balance of salaries between administrators, staff, faculty, and so on and so forth. It's my understanding that that work was completed in May of last year. And yet, no one that I'm aware of in any of the Faculty Senates of the five campuses has seen anything of that report. But if, if we could have access to that, then we could go to our faculties and explain that these salaries are either in balance or not in balance. Uh, so I'm, I, my request to the board is that we be given access to that assessment, which was completed in May of 2016. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Dr. Miller. Any other public comment? Moving on, action item five A, request approval of comptroller's office restructuring, SUVR. Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This recommendation, uh, speaks to the aim of restructuring the comptroller's, uh, office. In December of last year, the comptroller for SUVR, uh, uh, transitioned, uh, and as a result, the university has engaged in at least two searches to fill the void that left when Mr. Trapegnier, uh, passed. Those searches have been unsuccessful, and so what, uh, comes before this board is the, the result of the, uh, Division of, uh, Finance and Administration developing a strategy that would help support the goals, uh, of the, of Finance and Administration. And what it does is take the existing Associate Vice Chancellor for Financial Operations and ask that person to consume the additional role of comptroller. It also identifies two other individuals who would serve as an associate comptroller, uh, uh, with additional duties, uh, specific to the operation of those offices. All three positions are, are salary neutral, uh, in terms of the dollars allocated to support, uh, this restructuring plan.
I, I forgot to receive a motion in a second before discussion. I apologize. Do we have a motion on action item five A?
No, but I have a question.
Okay, I'm going to receive the motion. I'm going to receive the second, then we're going to open it up for discussion. We have a motion in a second. Mr. Clayton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. President?
Yes.
For years now, and I don't think it's, it's been fixed, the comptroller's office is the person or the entity that's responsible for paying our bills, right?
Yes.
And do we enjoy a healthy relationship in the business community that we interact with, that we pay our bills on time? It's a yes or no, then you can explain.
Yeah, I think we pay our bills on time. I, I, you know, uh, we, we do have some challenges as relates to, to, to grants, uh, and, and, and again, the aim of this is to, you know, identify individuals whom we have confidence in who could, uh, rise to our expectations. And so, uh, this strategy really identifies an individual who, or individuals who we think could improve the degree to which we facilitate our financial operations.
I'm going to shift that question to you, Mr. McClintock. Same question. Maybe he doesn't know, but I'll ask you. Do we share, do we enjoy a healthy relationship with the business community that we pay our bills on time? It's a yes or no, then you can explain.
I would say, at the mo, for the most part, we.
That's a different answer than the president. I'm saying. Yes or no?
Well, yes, we, we pay our bills on time. There are exceptions. You know, there are exceptions.
Give, give me an exception.
Well, a good exception would be that if. Any legal purchase. When I say illegal purchase, I'm saying you go out and buy something without going through the necessary, uh, purchasing procedures. If I go to a store, and we have sent out letters, even when I was in, uh, downstairs, you normally send out letters and to vendors and say to vendors that, please do not, uh, issue any of your merchandise unless you have a purchase order in hand. And I can assure you that many vendors, many times, will still go ahead and, uh, send out the merchandise without a purchase order. In addition to that, uh, another exception would be there are cases where you have, you said to the vendor, uh, deliver the merchandise to central stores, and they may go and deliver the merchandise to the, uh, to the department. You cannot pay a bill, you cannot pay a bill without, uh, a legitimate purchase order. You cannot pay a bill without a legitimate receiving report. And in some cases, you have, uh, when individuals go out, we find statements come out, and we realize that someone has went out and purchased, we follow up to try to get a purchase order and do those things. My answer to you, I guess, would be that if you follow the purchasing process, normally the bills are paid on time.
And I'm going to accept that. But I'm sure publicly broadcast, I'm probably going to get somebody to send me some, some, some invoices, but I've heard, and I have no proof, but I've heard many folks across town that say, man, Southern owes me a bill, why don't they pay for state, why don't they pay for this and pay for that? But if you say that and we do, then I'll accept that. Then I'll move from this, from that to here. If we have one person, Trapegnier, in charge, under this new structure, you're going to have three people that, that we need to go to, to, to find out who's in charge of paying these bills?
No. No. We. We will have, um, we will have one person, sir, one person who will assume the additional responsibilities of comptroller, and then you would have two assistant comptrollers who, whose role would be specific to, uh, one being accounting and another be, uh, uh, policy development and facilitating grants. and another be policy development and facilitating grants. And I'm saying, so we, we are taking the, we are taking the role and the salary that, 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 that supported the position of comptroller, and we're using two additional, and we're using that salary to support the promotion of two additional associates and the overload that would be required of the Associate Vice Chancellor.
So are you promoting the number two man, a person, and then you're taking the salary that you would have paid the person who's no longer there and dividing it between the three of them?
Well, we're not evenly, we're not dividing it evenly, but in essence, that's what we're doing. The, the Associate Vice Chancellor, it's my understanding, was previously paid $90,000. Eighty-five. And so in keeping with the additional responsibilities, that salary was increased. And I think the, I'm not sure. Mac, do you want to be, offer more detail?
The comptroller was making eighty-five thousand. What the decision was made to add to the Vice Chancellor for Finance and Associate Vice Chancellor's position, add to comptrollership. But the served, looked at all the responsibilities and redistributed the responsibilities, which means that at this time, first we had a comptroller, a vice, Associate Vice Chancellor, and Associate comptroller. We distributed the responsibilities. We eliminated the comptroller's position. We added additional responsibilities to the Associate Vice Chancellor. We brought in, we have a position now for an Associate comptroller and also a position, two positions. One for Associate comptroller, and we already had one that was over grants. So what it did in essence is that the eighty-five thousand dollars was actually distributed among the three, but one of the positions didn't exist. So one of the positions, the seventy thousand, which is the one that Ms. Clark is in, that position didn't exist. So those responsibilities, many of them that's at the comptroller level, will also be shared in that, with that position.
This is voodoo. I don't know what in the world this is. So do you have an Associate comptroller but not a comptroller for that guy to be associate to?
And I can pass that I have the distribution. The comptroller, we no longer have.
I get that part. Do you have an Associate comptroller?
We have two.
And to no comptroller?
Right. But the comptroller becomes, wait, can I finish that? That comptroller is now the Associate Vice Chancellor, Vice Chancellor and comptroller. She carries a dual title.
Oh, there is a comptroller.
Yes, sir.
All right.
In fact, can I move back to your question on your.
I'm lost, but don't worry, just keep talking, because I promise you, you've lost me. But go ahead. I'm confused, but I don't, I'm not going to worry about it.
Okay, but I can, before I leave, I'll give you, I have the schedule here. And I don't want, I don't really want you to leave confused because I want to be able to explain this. Ain't no help, man? But let me.
It's in the packet. I mean, it is in the packet, the schedule.
I do have the schedule, and I'll pass it out while we are in board meeting.
All right, thanks.
But I wanted to say back to you, Mr. Clayton, on your statement in terms of, well, we have vendors who says that. I do want to also say to you that there's, there's a lot of turnover in the.
I love the way you cover yourself, because I'm going to tell you, I don't ask a question, I don't know the answer to.
I know you do.
But I appreciate that, because there are a bunch of vendors out there. But don't worry about it. You got new folks, and they're going to pay the bills on time. And I'm just going to look from this point forward.
Okay.
And hopefully they're being paid on time.
Yes, sir.
Well, the whole aim in this, in this restructuring is to improve service delivery. And, and, and in my earlier comments, I guess that's what I was trying to suggest, that we have confidence that this new restructuring will, in effect, approve the, the financial operational efficiency of, of the, of S U B R.
Mr. Clayton, may I? The schedule is actually in your, in your packet that I referred to.
Right.
That shows the various positions and, and who's replacing what. If you look in your packet, you will see that schedule. And you'll also see the positions that are currently budgeted and the positions that we are proposing. And you'll see what the net adjustment is in terms of dollar amount. But it's in your packet.
I think that we could minimize time if we could get this, these attachments in time for the board members to see, because we've been, we have, we, we did not get most of this information until yesterday evening. And so either that, or we're going to have to set a timeline for it, Mr. Financial Chair. We'll do, when I say timeline, yeah, I can explain it to you. Although, we have ten days before our agenda. We try and get that agenda out in ten days. But you do not have the attachments to it. That's why Mr. Clayton and also Attorney Clayton and Attorney McGee and Ann Smith have so many questions about it, because I don't have the, I do not have these. Right, the support documents. I don't have the attachments. And I waited and waited and waited, and I never did get two of the attachments. Two of them I still have not gotten. So how can, how can I vote or support or even ask the board members to support something, and I don't have the attachment to read? So I'm, I'm going to ask the board to consider or to think about it. And if we need to put a timeline on it, I will. Well, if I have the power, I'm going to put a timeline on it. I'm just going to tell you. No, I have not gotten the attachments. It's just that simple.
Yes, 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 Madam Chair. I think the attachments were slow in coming, and I certainly apologize for that. And with that being said, I think this came from Mr. Pugh's shop. Mr. Pugh, was there any reason why some of these attachments weren't submitted in a timely fashion? Or, Mr. President, you can, I apologize.
To my knowledge, I mean, and I think the Chair and, and members of this board, their observations are generally correct, that we, we certainly need to do a better job of providing the support documents in a, in a timely fashion. I think in this particular case, I think we, we had posted the support documents such that it could provide for the board sufficient review. But, but we certainly will take into account any timeline, Madam Chair, that you think is warranted and certainly try to comply with that.
Mr. McGee? I've got a little feedback going on. Mr. Clayton?
I, you know, I suggest that I'm going to make a motion that we defer this and send it back to the President. One, when you look at your org chart, there's no comptroller, and you got associate comptroller. That may sound minute, but when you send your structure off to Saks and all that stuff, you, you guys got to have an organizational chart that makes sense, as well as the support documentation that I can't read now. I just think, Madam Chair, they ought to go back to the table, get it done right, organize this thing in the proper manner. And, I mean, why are you taking, getting rid of the comptroller and spreading the duties? That in and of itself makes sense, but who has what duties and et cetera? I just, I move that we defer this to the next meeting until they can, they can explain to us what they're doing by reorganizing and hold department. If I dive a second, it dies of a second. I just, that was my second.
Hold on one second. We have a mo, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? There's a motion in a second. Mr. Pugh?
Substitute, make one motion. Sure was.
There was a main motion on the floor. Motion takes precedent, so if there's a second, then you proceed on the motion to defer.
Good evening.
Mr., I believe the President asked you to come up. You did. No, I did.
I requested of, of the Chair, if he could offer some clarification.
Thank you. My goodness.
Thank you. I like the opportunity to offer some clarification. Attorney Clayton? Okay. You asked the question, what was the motivation or the reason why we needed to move on this at this particular time? We are in the process of trying to close the fiscal year books for fiscal year 17. We were trying to get these people on board so that we would be able to maintain the timeline that we had established in order to get our A F R completed by the state stipulated date. As you indicated, these individuals are people that have a skill set that have been working within our office. The other young lady has previously worked at Southern University and now is working in the law school. So what we're trying to do is develop a cadre of individuals who have a skill set and experience and credentials that can move this university forward. As you all know, Ms. Bennett, Mr. McClintock and myself have probably forty years, an average of forty years' experience at Southern University. So we're trying to develop these individuals so that when we leave, we will have sufficient individuals available for the university to move this institution forward. You asked the question a little while ago about accounts payable. I'll share with you that, as Mr. McClintock said, we are doing an excellent job of paying bills when the paperwork is processed correctly and in a timely manner. But in addition to that, since my return here, we have added personnel to accounts payable in order to specifically deal with that particular problem. It is very important that we move with this particular paperwork, this restructuring. We, we had two full searches. The second time, we paid money to advertise in the Morning Advocate, and yet, we were unable to attract the kind of candidates that we feel we need here at Southern University.
Why?
Sir, I will tell you that the main reason is money. The salaries that we're paying for finance personnel when we're looking for M B As, C P As, people with experience in finance, is just too low. And so we have individuals that's at other agencies that we're trying to attract to Southern University, and those people laugh at me when I tell them what I'm offering to pay them. So this was a strategy where we could take our own personnel at the institution. Ms. Monica Mealy, the person that I've suggested for the combination job of Associate Vice Chancellor and comptroller, has experienced, firstly, the C P A. She has experience with the legislative auditors, who definitely review all of our work. And Ms. Mealy has worked in the comptroller's office before. So we thought that it was a no-brainer that if we had this type of person within our ranks already, that, and also saving money, we could combine those two positions and still come up with a work plan that is something that will work for the university. I'm reminded of a commercial that says, people who know, know B D O. And I'm going somewhere with that. Why don't you outsource it? If you don't have the money here and you having to pay fringe benefits and all this money here, why don't you outsource it to a B D O-type operation to let them come in and take control of the bills if we don't have the money? Mr. Clayton, we have looked at outsourcing for a number of different areas at the university, but I can assure you that I know of no schools in the state that are currently outsourcing the main financial backbone of their university. Those things are in-house, hired with your people so that you will have adequate control of making sure that you can produce a financial product that is satisfactory to all the external agencies. And that is done by having your own people who are highly trained, who are highly motivated, and are willing to work for the university.
Any other questions for Mr. Pugh?
Like to ask is that we get the attachments early enough so that the board members can get them and view them. It's no reason why we should have to wait until the night before the board meeting or the day before the board meeting to get these attachments. That's the only thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it would clarify a lot. But it's difficult for me to vote or to ask for support of voting, but I don't see the, the additional information that I need to see in order to make a vote. So, Mr. Attorney?
For clarification purposes, this is the motion to defer. Wrong?
Technically, it's a motion to postpone under Robert's rules.
Not a motion to defer?
Yeah, a motion to defer would refer, would refer to refer to committee. This would be a motion to postpone, and it needs to be clarified as it, as to whether it's postponed to a definite time or postponed indefinitely.
Administration can review their chart and their responsibilities, however the, this thing has been divvied up or divided up or however you put it, so that the board can have some clarification as to what they're voting on.
We have a call for the question. Roll call vote, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Attorney McGee? Reverend Gatt?
No.
Attorney Clayton?
Yes.
Dr. Gaines?
Yes.
Reverend Gatt? I mean, I'm sorry, Reverend Henry?
Yes.
Dr. Tarver?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Excluding it to the next board meeting. Moving on, action. Yes, sir.
Just before you move on, I'd like to ask, I think, maybe a person a question.
Yes, sir.
In view, in view of the fact that the comptroller passed, how is the, are we okay with our business now? And I'm talking to Dr. McClintock.
Right.
From what I've been understanding, we were kind of murky there, so that's what my real concern is.
Now, we are, we are in the process, it's even becoming more crucial. As you know, we are in the mode now of closing the books. I can assure you that the auditors are already here. They came in this week. And we normally begin closing around the latter part of May, the closing process, which ends at June 30th. So it will, like Mr. Pugh said, will have an impact on us because of the fact that we do not have a comptroller. And it, it has affected us because he played a major role. But as Mr. Pugh said earlier, you know, we went out with two searches, and we are actually trying to prepare to close the books at June 30th. To answer your question, sir.
Mr. Fondale? Mr. McClintock, will you have enough time between now and the next meeting to do what is necessary if it's approved at the next meeting? Will there be enough time?
Well, it would, you know, if you, it would definitely impact us because it would kind of, it would, you know, the individuals that we need to close the books, it just mean it would delay it for whatever time period between now and the next board meeting. But we're going to do the best we can, but it definitely will have an impact on closing.
Dr. Tarver?
I thought that most of the people who are currently working on that closure, they're already working, aren't they, on this chart? You're just talking about reassigning some of those same people. Are there any positions that are not currently filled that are being filled by this process?
Right, one of the individuals is not currently in the comptroller's office. That person works in the law center that we are recommending today. So that's the only position that's not there now, but we do have a vacant position there, sir.
But we could detail that person to that shop for that purpose of a thirty-day period of time in anticipation that you're going to get the information back that ultimately we will approve.
Right, we can, we can detail.
What I'm suggesting.
Sir, we can detail them, but that person right now is also in the law center assisting with closing.
Just wait, just wait. Dr. Tarver still has the floor.
Let me finish, please. I, I, I know what you're trying to accomplish.
Yes, sir.
And I know what you're going to end up having to do. And I'm just trying to make it easier for you to do this in light of the fact that this vote is says this is going to get postponed. And to reconsider that takes more votes than it took to pass this. So the continued discussion is not going to get you what you want.
Right.
What you want to do is be able to take the number one priority and bring closure to those books and use any personnel within the system that's available for you to do that.
that. And I think then you'll protect the position that you're trying to accomplish here with this board and in your next board meeting.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor Pierre?
I just wanted to add that, uh, you know, we're willing at the law center to do anything necessary to facilitate this process. This is a conversation we've been having, uh, for the last, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five days, and we'll do whatever is necessary to facilitate this process because this is extremely important. Uh, and, uh, you know, I think we can get it done.
All right, moving, moving on. Action item five B, request approval for band director and assistant directors special event adjustment, S U B R. Is there a motion? We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, Mr. President.
So, uh, this recommendation requests the consideration of the board to really extend an overload to the band director and members of his staff in keeping with, uh, prior practices, uh, uh, that have provided such an overload in light of their participation in the Bayou Classic. This matter is coming for this board this year, uh, based on, um, based on a, how should I say it, a, a difference in how, in how we have supported, uh, how we have advanced revenue that was generated in the Bayou Classic, back in the, during the Bayou Classic. In years past, that revenue would come directly to the university. Uh, this year, uh, we, the foundation and the campus agreed that revenue generated to, uh, generated in the Battle of the Bands would go exclusively to the band. The pro, and, and those revenues were deposited in the account for the band. The, the challenge is, the challenge is, is that, um, that there is a policy against, um, let me see, uh, that there is a policy, uh, that, that the foundation must be guided by in terms of, uh, su- supporting salaries through the foundation. Having said that, uh, the university is advancing this overload, uh, uh, to, to, to continue the tradition of supporting the band and its staff as a result of their participation in the Bayou Classic.
So as I understand it, uh, Mr. President, the Battle of the Band generates a finite amount of money. This year, we're gonna take some of that money and assist with salaries, uh, on, on the...
It's a, it's a one-time... Um, supplement, if you will, to the persons that are identified. The reason why it has come to the board first is because state law provides that if there is an external source that is greater than a thousand dollars that is gonna be provided to a university employee, it must be board-approved. So the request was made to the foundation initially, and we said to, uh, the request door, this would have to be approved by the board first. It is not quote-unquote "public dollars" that are being expected to appropriate, uh, this, it is from the money that was generated by way of the, uh, Battle of the Bands minus the expenses that we paid in terms of hotel, meal, travels, and so forth.
I approve for, I, I move for approval.
Second, one second.
Calling the question.
Yes, sir, it is one-time. So if the request were made next year, Dr. Gaines, which I expect it to be, then the board would have approval. It's not a continuing.
Okay. Each time that this makes place, the board is...
Yes, sir, yes, sir. That's, that's, ex, with law, exactly.
I believe Reverend Gant was calling the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, hearing no opposition. I'm, I'm really gonna need some assistance on five C since we, we moved, uh, five A to the, or postponed it to the following meeting. I need to know a- actually what we're moving forward with on, on, on five C. Uh, Mr. President, or Ben, what? Yes, sir.
Since what we've done so far has been at the behest of a motion by Mr. Clayton, my question's directed at Mr. Clayton. Mr. Clayton, your, did your question, was your question limited to the structure?
Yes, it was.
Of the move, more so than the positions and people?
Just the structure.
Okay. Now, in light of that, it seems to me appropriate that we can consider the approval of the positions as, as presented here, which would then help satisfy part of the issue they had earlier ago.
One structure.
Okay, but, yeah, the structure, how you place them in the organization and the hierarchy of command and to achieve the end you want still has to be approved by this board. That would be separate and distinct from this.
That is one hundred percent true. Mr. Chair?
That's fuzzy to me.
Well, I can make it clear.
Well, hold up. I didn't talk when you talked, hold up. The problem that I'm having, and if it's, if the problem is with the structure, how can you deal with personnel and you don't have a structure? To me, and, and maybe that's just me, if, 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 if we're gonna get that technical, I think we ought to have a structure, and then we plug people into the structure. Because I think, I mean, where are these, what are these people gonna do if we approve these salaries today at these positions? What are they gonna be doing when we don't have the structure? Who's gonna, if, if gonna wait to do the structure, then I think we ought to wait to do everything next month. Because to me, it's just not making sense. You say you're gonna approve the structure, but, but we're gonna approve these salaries in these positions. Now, maybe somebody can clear me up, but, and, uh, Dr. Tarver said he could, but to me, it's fuzzy to me.
Well, well, the only reason I advanced it is because when I stopped and thought about what we did in light of the conversation, and when I asked the question about what's being impacted, it seemed to me that all these people are already on board, number one. They're all performing their dues and responsibilities, except for one person, and that one person is over at the, over the law center. So I was just trying to find a way of allowing them to take the existing personnel and reshuffle them to do what they want. You're only consigning them to this, to these functions for thirty days because they still got to bring back another proof. If we vote down the structure a month from now, that will simply rearrange where these people fall in the scheme of things. And I was only trying to allow them the opportunity to be able to hire one person. But it depends upon how you wanna manage this process.
And Mr. Chair...
I just thought that was a possibility.
And Mr. Chair, in, in light of that, what I was gonna say to these other members of the board who are not members of this committee, when it comes up for the, when it comes up before the board, we need to go back and kill it and let these people go to work.
Oh, but they are working.
Well, okay, they're working, yes.
Reverend Gant, Reverend Gant.
Uh, and, and, okay.
Reverend Gant, Reverend Gant, hold on.
Help me out then. They are working in these positions now.
Hold on one second.
I'm, I'm asking, okay, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir. Um, Mr. Clayton, are you gonna defer to Mr. Gant?
No, I'm not. I like to take my turn.
And I, so, to the gentleman from Shreveport, all right, to, to make it clear, if, if a person is called Associate Vice Chancellor for Financial Operations slash Comptroller, and you take the slash comptroller off, you still got the same position. So I think Dr. Tarver is spot-on. I don't have an issue with him having his people funded, I have an issue with his organizational structure. So if he's gonna call him A, B, and C, he might want to call him A, E, and F. It has nothing to do with funding it, putting the person there, it's the titles that I'm concerned about. No further questions or comments.
Funding, funding has to do with positions. Call for a question.
No, I'm... He, he, he's got the floor, Mr. Mr. Clayton.
Funding has to do with positions, and, and we play games, but funding has to do with the position that we're putting people in. And, and I think this is something that we've talked about, and this is the last thing I'm gonna say to the board, vote high field, but I just wanna put high field out there because I think one of the problems is we're gonna still have, from what Mr. Clayton said, we're gonna leave here without a comptroller. I think, I've asked my...
Well, I want everybody to know, there's no motion, there's no motion on the floor for a question to be called. We just went straight into discussion, Reverend Tobert, and then, uh, a- after Reverend, Dr. Tobert, then Dr. Tarver, and then, uh, y'all got me shook up up here, boy, Lord of the nation. My man from Lake Charles, brother Fondale.
I would just like the attorney to tell us, after hearing all of this, what is his opinion?
From a legal, structural perspective, not a Robert Roosevelt or Mr. DeQueer, do you understand the question?
Could you clarify the question? Because there's, there's, there's a couple of discussions going on that, that I was trying to follow.
Clarify both of them.
Okay. Procedure, I'll start procedurally, there's no motion on the floor.
Correct.
Which, which would mean there, there's no way to have a second, is to call for the question, which is technically a motion to limit or end debate. From a structural standpoint, the committee postponed the proposed reorganizational structure, which would mean the positions in the spreadsheet that correspond to positions created in the new, uh, in the proposed reorganization would by default have been postponed to the next meeting. So if you approve personnel actions, if, if you approve the positions that you previously postponed, that would technically be reconsidering the prior item. So the, the committee's already postponed the creation of the new positions that were in the prior reorganization because it chose to postpone that reorganization.
What Reverend Gant's saying is correct.
Well, yeah, to, to the extent you would be authorizing the positions that the committee had previously postponed, yeah, it would be a backwards way of reconsidering a prior item.
So with that being said, moving on, we gotta, or no, we're looking at action item, oh, I'm sorry, we're, uh, Dr. Tarver and then, or Mr. Fondale?
No action required.
Okay, Mr. Fondale? Moving on to action item five C, and as I understand it, there are, uh, individuals in five C that weren't part of five A, is that correct, Mr. President?
Uh, yes.
Please identify those individuals for me.
Uh, that would be, uh, uh, C one, two, and three.
C one, C two, and C three. So at this time, the chair entertainer motioned to pass action items five, C one, two, and three with the understanding that four, five, and six have been deferred until the, not deferred, postponed until the following board meeting. Is there a motion?
No.
There's a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. President, the only one that I have a question about is five C three, Mr. Mr. Lawson. I see that, that's an interim director of Title III, new appointment, S U B R. Can you explain to me what's going on with that one?
Uh, yes. Um, uh, our intent, uh, is to, uh, facilitate a search for the director of, of Title III in light of the fact that the person who previously, uh, had assumed that role, we have, have elevated to a system director. Uh, we would anticipate within the next couple of months, at the latest, uh, bringing forth to this board a permanent, uh, director to assume those responsibilities.
So I, I would just like a, a definitive amount of time that you, uh, think Mr. Lawson will be in this interim position? You said a couple of months?
At the latest.
That's two?
At the latest, we, we will immediately initiate a search for that, that is a very critical role, uh, and, and quite frankly, we are in the process of developing activities for our Title III project.
And I thought I was right in line with school starting.
Exactly right, sir.
Okay, I just, it took me a little while to add to, Mr. President, I apologize.
Yes, sir.
So we're looking at bringing this back and, and having a permanent, uh, director of Title III for Southern University.
That's right.
Are there any other, are there any other questions? All right, uh, all in favor of action item five, C one, two, and three? Uh, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, hearing no opposition, motion passes. Let's go to, uh, D one and two. Is there a motion for approval of D one and two? We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. The only question that I have, um, um, Human Resources is, I, I think, I requested that we take, a couple of months ago, um, at the, at the retreat, I requested that we take a look at, 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 at how the procedure insofar as medical leaves are, are concerned. I was wondering if, well, we had an opportunity to do that, Mr. President?
Mr. McClintock, have we provided any follow-up on that today?
Uh, is Mr. Pusso here?
Yeah.
Let me ask him to come up.
Can anybody hear you today?
Mr. Pusso's coming.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
We, uh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Everyone. We, uh, have a regular procedure that we follow under the, uh, federal guidelines. We follow that for FMLA. We have doctor statements in the light of...
Well, I'm, and I, all I wanna know is, I, I think we found that there was kind of disconcerting when we had a huge number of folks taking medical leave. I was wondering if, if we identified that problem, and I think there was a discussion about getting a second opinion. Uh, in some instances, we had folks taking medical leave for an, you know, an extended amount of time, longer than the FMLA. Have we had an opportunity to look at, at that to make any cor, course corrections that may need to be made?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor, uh, all in favor of approving items D one and two. Please respond by signifying aye. Any opposition, hearing no opposition, we're gonna move to, uh, item number six, other business. Uh, Mr. President, at this time, I would like to request, uh, for as, as long as I'm honored to serve as the chair of personnel, as well as a member of this board, I would like to know, uh, have a part of the agenda being all personnel decisions that were made, whether, uh, the ones that do not need board approval, so that we can see what goes on on a monthly basis. Um, I understand there's a sixty thousand dollar first, threshold for, uh, staff, maybe, and a seventy thousand dollar threshold for, uh, faculty, and so I, seventy-five thousand dollar th- threshold for faculty. So I'd like to see, I'd like to see on a monthly basis, um, and I'd like to share with the board, or members of the committee as well as the board, uh, all personnel actions that, that move, that fall below those threshold, that threshold, uh, so that we can at least see what's going on.
But, but between the, between sixty and seventy-five or...
No, below sixty, below si, just, it won't require any action, it can be part of the packet. You actually don't even have to put it on the agenda, but just have part of our packet every month, whatever personnel, uh, actions that were taken that were below that threshold, just so that we can see.
Below sixty thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
You could exempt that category because what you're really looking at are the unclassified positions.
Okay, wha- what I'm asking for is all personnel...
Salaries.
Salaries, salaries that fall below the threshold of sixty thousand dollars for whomever, whoever has to have the criteria of over sixty thousand dollars for board approval, and then all personnel who fall in between that sixty and seventy-five thousand dollar range, who meet that criteria, that don't have to have board approval. As I understand, a faculty member could be making forty thousand dollars and the president or chancellor, president's last chancellor can decide to pay them seventy-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and that doesn't go in front of the board. I would like a part of the packet to reflect that. I don't think it's that confusing or complex.
You don't think the classifieds should be dollars for powers? They fall in that category.
I just said all salaries, I mean...
I don't know what that's necessary. It, it won't fall in the definition you've just given. Those are, those people in those positions won't be hired by the example you've given.
I would like that motion to rock and roll. Against that, because I think we now venturing to a, well, that's, that's within his province as president, I don't wanna know all that, and I don't think we need to know all that.
Okay, well, cool. I do, I do, and it's not a form of motion, as a member of this board... As a member of this board, I can request pretty much anything to be placed on the agenda and anything to be packaged within the agenda, and that's my right, and that's what I'm doing, Mr. Clayton.
You, you okay? But if you put it on generally, then I'm gonna vote it down. I got a right to vote against it, too.
There's not gonna be a vote, Mr. Clayton, for you to vote down. Thank you, make the motion. It's a request for information, and as a board member, every board member, every member of the Southern University Board of Supervisors has a right to request information. If you don't wanna review it, like you generally don't, then you don't have to review it. Okay, I'm just asking for the information. With that being said, I'll entertain a mo- a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Second.
We are adjourned.
Good.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, um, we are ready to go into our regular board meeting, um, agenda. However, do you need a five or 10-minute break?
Yes, please.
Let's take a 10-minute break and be back. Thank you. At this time, uh, Board of Supervisors' meeting is called to order. Roll call, please. Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Mrs. Smith?
Present.
Reverend Henry?
Present.
Dr. Tarver? Mr. Be- uh, Bellamy? Path- Pathology?
Pathology.
I get it, I'm gonna have to practice that, so, my apologies. Attorney Clayton? Dr. Davis? Mr. Fandell?
Where is he?
Ms. Franklin? Dr. Gaines?
Here.
Reverend Gant?
Here.
Mr. Hilliard? Attorney McGee? Mrs. Small? Attorney Rutledge? Reverend Tobert? Dr. Whitfield? You have a call, ma'am?
Thank you. May I get a motion to adopt the agenda? It has been moved and second. Any corrections? Motion carries. Public comments? Do we have any public comments? None?
We'll have one.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes.
Hello, my name is Leanne Baker, and I'm from the Department of Speech, Language, Pathology, and Audiology. I wanted to thank you for approving the clinical education fee. It will ease the students' pocketbooks. We have lots of fees that they have to pay for, um, as part of their clinical education, including things like CPR, TB skin tests, background checks, drug screens. These are things that we require on campus and off campus, and currently, they're having to come out of pocket for this money, and now that you've approved this fee, it will come out of their, um, their financial aid, so I do appreciate that. We're doing great things in our department, and so now that I know I can bring our students to you, I will share that information with you. Last year, one of our graduate students, Carmen Martin, she was graduate student of the year for Louisiana. She won the honor, um, from, uh, hundreds of students throughout, about, um, the seven graduate programs, so we were really, really proud of Carmen for winning graduate student of the year, and we appreciate the foundation's support, the university's support, and your support of our programs, um, that we have in the Department of Speech, Language, Pathology, and Audiology. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? None. We have a special presentation above and beyond, and, uh, do we have Dr. Walker in the house at this time? Will you come and present, please?
First of all, I would like to give honor to the Lord God of Israel. I see Reuben Walker rise briefly and with berevity to say a few words on the nomination of Curtis Van Chisly to the Honorable Board Chair, President Belton, Vice Chair Reverend Henry, President Emeritus Tarver, as Reverend Tarver says, ingloble, all other distinguished board members. I find it a privilege to be here to speak very briefly. The criteria have, has, there are five criterias. One of them deals with providing behind-the-scenes support. Mr. Chisly, just like a good neighbor, he's always there. He's my research associate, and in fact, all phases of the land-grant campus, he is called on to help. He is the husband of Catrice Chisly in the back of Human Resource. Curtis is an inventor, former livestock show manager, colleague, graduated from Southern University in 1974. He manages three farm units without pay for the last six years. Three individuals have retired. Curtis Chisly have worked their position at no cost. So, in, in essence, he's doing the job of four individuals without pay. Also, the second criteria deals with, uh, creative concepts and ideas. Mr. Chisly is looking to trademark what we call goat boudin. Also, if you go to the National FFA website, all FFA clubs around this country use its Southern University's FFA Meet Identification CD. So, if you, and that CD has generated about $20,000 to the Southern University Ag Center. Criteria three, meeting deadlines on time. Every month, there's a animal livestock inventory. Curtis Chisly the first one to submit his. Another criteria, team efforts. Two years ago, Vice Chancellor Eubanks, uh, livestock show manager, retired. They called on Curtis Chisly to help, and he's always there, and we appreciate that. And one of the things that, uh, Chancellor Dean, Dr. Fields, has been asking the land-grant campus is to be role models. Curtis Chisly is that role model, when you're doing the job of four people with one salary. Chancellor Fields is working hard as a plant breeder and a trainer. I would like to suggest that you may wanna clone Curtis Chisly, uh, because he's doing so much. So, in closing, I would like to say, as my research associate, I find it an honor for what you have already done, is doing, and will do. Without the slightest hesitation, I'm delighted that the board decided to bestow upon you the Above and Beyond Award for the month of May. All the very best.
Justice, you want to turn?
Can you make a comment about that goat?
I've, I've been asked to, uh, to serve on the National Goat Conference for the last three years. This year is my fourth year. And, uh, I made a goat boudin, I call it go-dan. That's a, that's a trademark, that's a trademark that I, I'm trying to give for the university, uh, before anybody else do. Or I can make a goat and shrimp stir fry that I had last, uh, last Saturday at the goat, uh, conference, that, uh, was excellent, so I could make that for the, for the, for the board. But, uh, traditionally, uh, goat is, 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 uh, if you hadn't been raised on it, it's not a, it's not palatable to most people that hadn't had goat. And so, what my job is to try to make it taste as good as pork and beef, the other red meats. All of them, sure.
The only thing I would like to say is, Mr. Chisly is a classic example of teamwork works. He is an outstanding team player, and the, uh, the entire Animal Science Department, and really, the whole entire college is, is, is beneficial from your work. Thank you so very much.
Above and Beyond Award honoring Curtis Chisly, Research Associate for Southern University Agricultural Research and Extension Center for going the extra mile to help us all achieve our goals. Thank you for your dedication, your commitment, and for your professionalism, and this comes from Southern University Board of Supervisors, Your truly Chair and Dr. Ray Belton, President-Chancellor 2017. Thank you, and we are very proud to present this to you.
Mr. Chisly, let me also, on behalf of the entirety of the Southern University System, administration staff, and most importantly, the students, also offer you this certificate of appreciation, speaking to your service, uh, and, and service of and beyond. So, congratulations, and thank you for what you do for, for the Ag Center specifically, but generally, in keeping and defining Southern University.
He's gonna do another picture.
Uh, good afternoon. I would like to thank, uh, Madam Chair and the board members for this award. Uh, I graduated, uh, Dr. Walker said in 1974, but I started in 74. I graduated in 78, uh, from Animal Science, and then I went to USDA for 26 years. The last six years, I came back to Southern as a liaison between the university and USDA. And after that time, um, I was asked to go to, move to Washington DC, and after I had got back home for six years, I said to Dr. Malad, if you would hire me, if USDA would let me retire and you would hire me for, um, 10 years, uh, I would stay. And that's how I ended up, uh, being here the last 10 years. I have won, uh, three awards. I was a cluster award winner. I was the Ag Center Award winner, now I'm the system award winner. Uh, as a Southern University graduate, uh, I would like to thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Job well done. Uh, before we move into our action items, we have one other person that, it, it, it has been such a pleasure for us to work with this young lady. She has brought a lot to the board. She has been one of the most prosperous student representatives that we've had since I've been on the board, Miss Jordan Franklin, and I'm gonna tell you just a few of the things that I know she was instrumental in, in the short year that she has been here. She's the one that brought the childcare facility to focus here at the university, and, and, uh, either they're working on it, I heard you mention it again today. She has been extremely informative and helpful, uh, in pushing for the childcare facility. She also, as you saw, that she was, uh, recognized today for the court, uh, uh, activity where they won first, and they won over LSU, and which was a very strong, strong, uh, attitude for not only her, but the law school period. And another that I can remember shortly was she brought the fact that today we honored the two, uh, young men that were, uh, killed during the riot here, uh, and she brought that to the board, and, and with Chancellor Pierre and, and her pushing that, it was, uh, to, it came to reality yesterday and today, because those families were honored yesterday and again today. So, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we're gonna miss you. I know I'm going to miss you, because she did very worthwhile things, uh, while she was here. We would just like to, uh, say so long. We have a small token for you. We're gonna miss you, and I wish we had, uh, 16 other Jordan Franklins. Thank you. Will you come out front?
Yes, ma'am.
On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, thank you so much.
Ms. Franklin, I can tell you, and I, and I, I present this to you on behalf of all of the Chancellors, uh, in my office, and in keeping with, uh, personally, how much I've had great pleasure of, of working with you and, and serving you, uh, in, in your role, and, and so you, indeed, I, I wanna offer congratulations to you, uh, for the most momentum, uh, event that will occur on tomorrow, but also just say that we really appreciate your contributions to the Southern University System.
We've been here for a while, so I'll, I'll just briefly say, um, thank you all for the opportunity. It's been an absolute pleasure. I feel like it's definitely helped shape me, not only as a, a law student, but a future attorney. Thank you. Y'all have definitely, I feel like, made me more well-rounded, you know, I'm ready to sit on a board of a corporation next, so, thank y'all so much.
And beat Mr. Clayton.
Okay, and now we will move to the action item, item? Uh, may I get a motion to accept, uh, minutes for April 21st? It has been moved and second, that, uh, minutes be accepted. Uh, any comments? Any opposition? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. Uh, B, approval of committee reports and recommendations. Motion? It has been moved and second? Yes.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion. And my substitute motion is, in the original motion, it was moved that we would, item five A would be postponed, uh, until the next month meeting, but I would, oh, I would like to move that, uh, item five A would be, a, a substitute motion, that it would be approved, and along with that, the approval of action- it would be approved, and along with that, the approval of action items 5C, 4, 5, and 6.
Wait a minute, let's go back. You said item? Okay. Of personnel, and what else?
You know, in the original motion, it was moved that we postponed, I'm approving that we approve it. And along with that, I'm also mentioning item 5C, 4, 5, and 6 be approved. Excuse me? Right, we ain't got those yet.
It has been, he's bringing it back. He's bringing what we did. He's bringing it back, saying that he wants to put it back on agenda, and he wants a motion to approve it, that's what he's saying.
Madam Chair, but he's not doing it the right way. It's clarification. I hate to do this to him, but he, it's so discombobulated, the way he's trying to do it. Why don't you extrapolate the committee that it came under, and then go to that specific item, and pass everything else, and then we take on whatever you're trying to do? Because you're just saying 5A, 5B, that could be from the moon anywhere.
Madam Chair, from Personnel Affairs Committee?
Thanks, that's better.
Personnel Affairs Committee, action item 5A is where I'm making a motion that would be approved, where we have moved to postpone it for a month. And also, on the Personnel Affairs Committee, actions 5C, 4, 5, and 6, Mr. Clay.
I know what he did too. But since he wants to be that way. I play by whatever rule he wanna play by.
I'd be the first to say it's more than one like him on this board. It's about two of y'all.
I hear, I'm not ready. Because I didn't know you were gonna bring it to us. He's saying, he's making a motion to bring back 4, 5, and 6 from Personnel. That was from five, action item 5, right?
Yes, ma'am.
4, 5, and 6, is that it?
Yes, ma'am. 5A.
Okay. 5A is request approval control, oh yeah, that's the same thing, isn't it?
Well, no, the 4, 5, and 6 would be those positions in the Personnel, because according to the attorney, when we postpone this, in essence, you postpone item 4, 5, and 6 also.
Okay, so, okay. It is, a motion has been made that we, pardon? And second by McGee. Okay, at this time, any comments, questions? Comments?
Comment, comment, Madam Chair. A week ago, Ben Pugh, Mr. Pugh, started calling me in order to discuss this particular agenda item, as well as a couple of others. There were some concerns that I had, and of course, we went back to, we were, y'all call them salary adjustments, I call them raises. But at the end of the day, through the course of our discussion, I was satisfied with the direction Mr. Pugh wanted to bring his department. With that being said, he assured me that Mr. Mack, as well as President Belton, were intimately involved with the discussion and with his vision, and incorporated or approved his vision of how he wanted to run his shop. Now, I am deeply disturbed that a week and a half passed, and we could not receive the documents that we needed to review. I concur with Ms. Ann. I went on the website last night to get the PAFs and to look at them, and we must do better in the spirit of transparency. However, to postpone, let me back up. In my opinion, we are postponing, I'm not gonna say that either. In my opinion, I believe we should move this forward and show, this board should show a commitment to the President, to Mr. Pugh, that we agree with their vision, if this is what we are ultimately gonna do.
Not yet.
And with that, with that, I, I, I am going to ask my fellow Board members to support.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna ask my fellow Board members to support Reverend Gannon. I relinquish the floor, Madam Chair.
Yeah, and I understand that what you're saying. No, I'm not, I'm not gonna fire you on this one. I'm serious, I'm real serious. But my thing is, should we continue? Each month, the same thing occurs, every month. Every month, I have to ask, I have to almost beg for additional information, and I shouldn't have to go through that. It's just that simple. If I'm gonna be transparent, above board, and open with you, I expect the administration, and I expected the board to be open with me. It's just point blank, that's the way I feel, so.
And say, Madam Chair, however, you really do have an answer. It's a very simple one. Next month, they have to submit something. If they don't meet the criteria you're talking about, all you simply have to do is deny it going on the agenda. And when you prepare to say no, I guarantee you it'll stop that deliberatory process.
Okay, let me say this. Next month, should I not get the information that I need to move forward, to have my, to have meetings, and to inform you as a board, then I'm gonna request that it not be on agenda. On day 10, I should get the information, and on day 10, I should be afforded the, you see, are we saying no changes? Because between day 10 and today, if there are 10 changes, then I've given you the wrong information, and that's not the way I operate. It's just that simple. Yes.
To be quite candid, we're, they are all highly-paid professionals, and what's submitted 10 days prior, there should not be that many changes, and there's a break in the procedure somewhere. So, if this, and I fully support you as Chair Personnel, and hopefully, future Chair Personnel, I fully support you, and I would be 100% with you to say, if the documentation is not, there's no reason for the documentation not to be submitted. If we ask our students to time and submit their assignments, then we should demand the same thing from our leaders. It's as simple as that. With that, I'm gonna call for the question.
Can I get a motion? Motion and second. Question? Any opposition? All in favor? Any op, uh, question, comment?
Voting no, I'm voting yes, on everything but Personnel Affairs Committee, item 5B. I vote no.
It's already off, isn't it?
But that's not before the board.
Where is that 5B?
We voting on committee reports. Just 5A and C.
We not voting on them.
Yes, we are, we're voting on 4, 5, and 6, that's what he said, right?
Only thing before the.
Oh, oh.
We not voting on Board reports.
Do I need to take them individually?
We taking them individually.
All right.
I don't need a life jacket.
The way I understand Reverend Gannon's motion is, he made a specific motion for the Board to approve Personnel Committee Action Items 5A, 5C, 4, 5, and 6. And that is the discrete motion before the Board. The Board will have to take up the rest of the committee reports after it votes on this particular motion. So, right now, before the Board is Personnel Action Items 5A, 5C, 4, 5, and 6, which was the Personnel actions that were part of the restructuring plan.
Okay, all in favor? All in favor? Any opposition? Now, we'll go back to.
Now, we need to pick up the rest of the committee reports.
Madam Chair, we move to accept all the committee reports in the affirmative, the rest of, rest of the committee reports.
Okay, all others? All in favor?
Wait, wait, hold on one second. I believe Reverend Tobert had an issue with a part of one of the other committee reports.
That's, I have it here, number?
5B, he wants to vote.
5B, okay.
No, only on 5B.
Let the record show that we have band directors, that's 5B. We have Reverend Tobert voting against. Any other? Motion carries. Okay. We will now move to resolutions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, with your permissions. I offer resolutions for May 2017. Condolences, the Annie Price family, Mrs. Price, former employee in the SUBR Purchasing Department, the mother of Mr. Derek Price, SU Athletics Equipment Manager, passed away Thursday, April 27, 2017. The Maggie Chase family, Mrs. Chase, mother of Mrs. Gloria Walker, Controller's Office, SUBR, passed away on Thursday, April 27, 2017. The Wade Show's family, Mr. Wade Show's founding partner in the law firm of Show's, Tally &amp; Wash LLC, who also served on the SU System Presidential Search Committee in 2010, passed away on Saturday, May 6, 2017. The Leo Mims family, Mr. Mims, father of Dr. Lisa Mims-DeVizine, Chancellor of Southern University in New Orleans, and husband of Mrs. Yolanda Mims, Director of Disabled Student Services at Southern University at New Orleans, passed away on Monday, May 8, 2017. We also have some commendations. Congratulations are extended to Attorney Bernard Francis Senior, also known as BJ, a native of Donisonville, Louisiana, recently retired from his private law practice. Francis is a 1984 graduate of the Southern University Law Center, and in 1992, was the first African-American elected to serve as Mayor of the City of Donisonville, Louisiana since Reconstruction. And congratulations are also extended to Dr. Robin Merrick, the Office of the President, for being honored by the Girl Scouts, Louisiana East, as one of the seven Women of Distinction this week. Amongst, also amongst this year's honorries was Baton Rouge Mayor Sharon Weston-Broom. That concludes the resolutions for this month, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I need a motion? It has been moved and second. All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. Informational items, unification of Southern University System Technology and Back Office Operations, special presentation on Southern University Response to Act 619, the Implementation of IT Transformation Unification Plan.
And distinguished member of the Board, alumni and friends of Southern University. My presentation for the brevity of time will be condensed, so that I will not inundate you, you know, with all types of numbers. So, if you will allow me, for the next few minutes, we would like to share with you some of the strategies and things that we should do as a system to make sure that we streamline, standardize, and revamp, you know, our technology operations. As you all know, Act Legislative Act 619, without reading them all out, basically have various components. But the first two components of Act 619 is compelling institution of online systems to streamline their operations, consolidating their back office services, to ensure that we can begin to realize, you know, some synergies and efficiencies. Then, part number two, actually even go beyond that, by asking the different systems, for example, you know, like LSU system and our system, to also explore ways by which we can also share services. In looking at what is being called for in Act 619, basically, they're asking for efficiencies. They're basically asking institution of online in Louisiana to realize synergies, since we are all public entities. But as I've shared with you all, you know, last month, efficiency isn't nothing new to the Southern University system. Back in 2013, June 28 of 2013, this Board actually approved a transformation plan that will begin, you know, to streamline, you know, our operations, so that we can share our resources. Since that time, this Board has taken various actions to realize synergies, such as consolidation of positions, made a presentation to you all back last year, things that we've done in the new administration, to make sure that we streamline our operations. Since then, we've also looked into our banner contract that we currently have, and removed all items that was originally purchased, but that we are now using, to the tune of about 370,000. So, we've taken, you know, different steps to make sure, you know, that we can begin to streamline operations even before Act 619. Moving forward, it's a strategy to support a pathway forward. When we look at our operations, it's a lot of synergies that we still can realize within our own system, without being told by anyone, or being lumped, you know, with any other systems. And these are three different components. Evaluation of applications. We currently have banner that we use, you know, to conduct, you know, our operations, as well as our Moodle LMS, that we use for online learning. We look at our infrastructure within our system. There are some things that could be done to make sure, you know, again, that we're lean and still be efficient. Finally, we look at strategic back office operations within the system, and there aren't any as of today, even though, you know, a transformation plan was approved almost four years ago. So, what we're gonna begin to look at is, how can we bring all this together to make sure, you know, that we can fulfill, one, you know, the requirements of Act 619, but most importantly, to make sure that we realize some savings going forward. By looking at our banner ERP operations, we currently have three distinct banner systems. We have one in Shreveport, student, banner student, and financial aid. We have one, you know, out here in Baton Rouge, that comprises of HR, human resources, student, and financial aid. And we're also paying for the one, you know, out in New Orleans, which is, again, you know, is banner student and financial aid. We need to consolidate, or look into strategy to consolidate, you know, all these three banner that we're paying, three of everything, or in some cases, four of everything for, to make sure, you know, that we can run, you know, one single banner for our system. to make sure, you know, that we can run, you know, one single Banner for our system. Now, what does that do? That will ensure, you know, that folks in Shreveport and New Orleans will not have to access two different databases. One for the teacher to put in grades, and another one for the same employee to go view, you know, their pay and HR history. So by consolidating our Banner databases, that will remove all that. That will also allow us now to begin the dialogue with Illusion, who made Banner, so that we can negotiate, you know, a new license when the current one that we have expires in June, that will be based on a single application install. We believe that if we do this, then we can begin to also streamline, you know, our vendor services that supporting all these three Banner databases and consolidate them into one. We believe that if we do everything that we were supposed to do, you know, in the next couple of years, we should be able to realize about $770,000 savings in paying for three different applications. Moodle is another LMS that we use. And Moodle LMS stands for Learning Management Systems. In fall of 2016, we were able to migrate both Baton Rouge as well as SUNO, you know, to adopt Moodle operations. At that time, there was some significant savings that those two campuses were able to save. But even at that, Moodle also have what we call the add-ons. These are things that enhances, you know, the functionality of Moodle that we have to pay for. So Moodle is not a total no cost, it's just a low-cost application. And I've put some of those things on here for you all to see. We have tools that allow us to check, you know, for plagiarism. We have tools that allow the professor to see who is on the other hand of the computer actually taking exams to enhance their exam quality. We also have, you know, analytic tools. Also, we're paying, you know, for after-hours support for our students. Because for us to actually be a truly online institution, you're going to have to have, you know, I mean, all-around support. So after-hours support, you know, allow our students to seek, you know, help after hours and on weekends and holidays, even on Christmas Day. We also have some tools, you know, that interface, you know, Banner system, you know, with the Moodle system, so that if a teacher should integrate in Banner, it automatically feeds into Moodle and vice versa. But anyway, when we look at what we needed to do going forward, we should consolidate, you know, also and centralize, you know, our Moodle operations. So what you have is just one application for the whole system, and we do have the capacity to make that happen. When we look at what could be saved, if we were to take this approach, we're looking at about $114,000. It's not a whole lot, but everything counts. Then we look at our infrastructures. We are, all the three geographical locations have internet connections based on Lonnie, statewide network. We've engaged, you know, with Lonnie to build us our own private network that will actually integrate, you know, our campuses together, that will link, you know, Shreveport to Baton Rouge, Baton Rouge to New Orleans, so that we can communicate more effectively. One of the things that we could do also, you know, is right now, we are paying for long-distance to do business with ourselves. In Baton Rouge, you call Shreveport, we carry long-distance charges and vice versa. The same thing, you know, with New Orleans. To the tune that we are looking at about $72,000 that can be saved if we were to unify, you know, our telephone systems and bypass, you know, the tolls. Data center on Baton Rouge campus, currently we have three. And they are within, you know, harm's reach of each other. Can we support, you know, three data center operations? Well, we can create, you know, I mean, just one that can support, you know, all our operations on the Baton Rouge campus. The last time I checked, that's basically all the folks are doing. They're taking these type of steps to make sure that they can realize, you know, efficiencies and save some dollars. Learning internet access on the Baton Rouge campus, currently we have three. Law Center have theirs, Act Center have theirs, Baton Rouge have theirs. When all we need is just one, one connection, and all of these connections to the internet is plugged into the same, you know, single box. But in the meantime, we're paying three different charges. It's like you're paying three light deals at your house instead of one. We need to consolidate that to make sure that we can realize some savings. Backup and data recovery. Currently, everybody is doing their own thing. Baton Rouge is backing up to Pennsylvania, New Orleans is backing up, you know, to Baton Rouge venue. Law Center is backing up to Amazon. When we look at our operations, here we are, we are blessed with a campus that's about 240 miles away in Shreveport. What's keeping us from now using that campus, you know, as a data center, and save about $70,000 that we're paying every year, you know, to back up data with somebody else? In the case of New Orleans, they're actually backing up to Baton Rouge. If that's the case, what's keeping that campus from backing up to Baton Rouge campus? Save some money. We just think these are the kind of things that we needed to begin to look at to make sure that we can streamline, you know, our operations. Lastly, when it comes to infrastructure, we need to implement, you know, that backup, strategic backup operations that will allow us now to pull, you know, our employees together regardless of which campus, and begin to have teams that we know that this team is designated to support, you know, our Banner operations. This is the team that will support our email system. This is the team that will support, you know, our computer network. Currently, right now, all of the campuses are struggling because we cannot afford to hire every employee that we need to support our systems. However, there are pockets of strengths when we look at Human Resources that by pulling together this team, basically we'll be able to improve, you know, deliverable services. When we look at that, you know, infrastructure cost savings about $420,000. The version of the presentation that was in the board packet, I actually detailed, I would come up with these figures. But again, for the brevity of time, so I didn't want to inundate you all, you know, with these numbers, but it's there, you know, for everybody to see how we came up with those numbers that I'm talking about. Finally, when we look at those three areas, consolidating our applications, both Banner and Moodle, and then, you know, take some steps to start saving some funds, you know, from infrastructure. Currently, as it stands right now, we're looking at about $1.3 million that we believe we can save, you know, in due course of a couple of years. Now, these estimates are pretty generous. You know, if you all would just look at the details of it, we're not able to begin to talk about, you know, what we can save from pulling Human Resources together. We're just looking at infrastructure and applications. And we're looking at $1.3 million that we won't have to carry forward once we begin to implement, you know, these cost savings actions. So in summary, these are the proposed action for a pathway forward. We believe, you know, we need to consolidate, you know, and centralize our Illusion Banner ERP system. We should consolidate and centralize our Moodle LMS, similar to, you know, what's been done at ACTCS. Should we implement, you know, that statewide network? I believe we're almost there. Actually, you know, we're building on that right now. And then, you know, we will unify our telephone system so that we will not have to incur tolls for doing business with ourselves. Data center operations on Baton Rouge campus, you know, we should think, take a good look and see how we can consolidate those together so that, you know, it can be more efficient. Designate our campus up there to be a backup, you know, a backup repository. Basically, every campus in the South, most of them are backing up to Louisiana Tech and Rusty. So we should be taking advantage of our real estate that we have in Shreveport and use that campus data center to house, you know, all our data center for both the Baton Rouge campus as well as New Orleans. And most importantly, we need to implement, you know, strategic back office operations. In this day and age, we shouldn't have to have multiple of the same thing where you can have a team that can work, you know, anywhere, anytime, regardless of where they are actually physically housed. I think, you know, those are the kind of things that we should be looking into doing. Kind of got some charts out here, you know, from the whole transformation. But we can always talk about that, you know, some other time. And again, you know, the last chart shows basically those different teams that we're looking into creating to begin to drive, you know, our enterprise. And that's all, folks.
Any questions? If not-
Yeah.
If, if, look, President, if we can save this kind of money, what are we waiting for?
Well, I think this presentation was just to inform the board of the direction that we are taking right now. We are moving in this direction. Yes, we are.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, I recognize.
Alluded to Banner. Is Banner fully operational? And are we still having to hire consultants and all that kind of stuff with Banner?
I can, uh, well, Mr. President-
You want me to answer, or you want him to give you a more detailed answer?
I'd rather you answer. Believe it or not, you're shorter than him.
That's all right. Yeah. Well, I think we're still dependent somewhat on consultants, but we've moved away from them at a significant level. And so we are trying to build our own staff in terms of identifying individuals and shifting individuals who have the attributes to really support, you know, this system of operations, as Dr. Fabrero may mention.
Dr. Fabrero, why are we the only school in the nation that can't get up and running on banners? Why are we the only school in the country that can't be up and operational on Banner? I've been on this board 20 years. Might not go a day long, but we hadn't done it in that long, that period of time. Why haven't we?
Could you be more specific, sir?
Never mind.
I mean, we are on Banner.
And the Banner in Baton Rouge campus houses all of the modules. The ones in Shreveport only houses student and financial aid. Luckily, when the Banner was brought up in Baton Rouge, they brought up all the module, again, you know, as I've mentioned earlier, that include not just the student and financial aid, but you also have your HR, and you also have your finance module, which means it's a complete system. Now, the ones in Shreveport and the folks in New Orleans are having to go through the pain of accessing two different systems, you know, to process their work. And basically, we feel that we have the wherewithal and the capacity to begin to bring all these three Banner databases. We're paying three of everything, folks. We need to consolidate them and begin to realize some savings, which in turn will also enhance the productivity out there in Shreveport as well as in New Orleans, because now they will not have to access two disparate systems to get their work done.
I think this question has to do with the efficiency of the, of operating Banner. Of, I, we, there, there's modules in place, but there have been some challenges when you agree in the degree to which we have been efficient in facilitating or taking advantage of the capacity of Banner. And I think that's what this question is.
Yes, we have taken, you know, an awful lot of significant steps under your relatively young administration to make sure that our Banner and data center, you know, it's not, I mean, where the data center was two years ago is not where it is today, folks. Now, we may still be thinking about the way, you know, things used to run, but our Banner system hardly ever goes down nowadays. And when I first got here, you know, I hear all kind of horror stories about what needed to be done. We revamp, you know, I mean, our operations, we revamp our storage, you know, to the new storage systems that can handle, you know, the workload. So if anybody is still, no system is 24/7. We have to take some system down sometime, you know, to back them up or to apply the upgrades to it. But as far as the Banner operation not running properly-
Quick question. Can a kid go online and register? We're not having to come up here and walk from the mini-dome and go, then why we still have lines? And we had them last semester, and we're going to have them. You know what? I'll get your answer, I appreciate it. But I guarantee you, come registration again, you can't do like every other school, click one button, one-stop shop, it's done. These modules or whatever you call them are not communicating with one another, and you guys haven't fixed it yet. And you can sit up here and tell me that all day long, but you haven't fixed it. But thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. I would just like to say, I know that there is some progress being made, especially in the classrooms. I had the opportunity to walk through, Mr. Clayton, and now there, there are, well, let's say, the IT department has made a lot of progress in the classroom area. So I want to thank you. Mr. Marcus Brown, on any given day, he'll walk some of you through, and I'll guarantee you're going to appreciate that part. Now, with the Moodle part, yes, we are still having some issues from what I can see. But on any given day, Mr. Brown, would you walk some of them through and let them see how he is? I'm saying him because he's the one that shared it with me. He upgraded, has upgraded quite a bit of technology for us. So we have smart boards now in the classrooms, and you'd be surprised if you take the time one day and walked through.
I will, thank you, Madam Chair.
Not just him, all of us as a board. Thank you for all that you're doing, IT. Okay, we're going to move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a legislative update.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Kevin Cunningham. We just concluded week five of the legislative session. It ends June 10, 2017, so we'll have about a little less than a month to go. As far as the budget is concerned, for this year, this fiscal year and the next, because the biggest problem is, as you've heard me say, and I've heard, I know you've heard Rodney Braxton also tell you, is that this year we were facing a $440 million deficit for, I'd say this year, the fiscal year in which they're actually legislating for. The year after that, in 2018, there's what we call the fiscal cliff, where there's about a $1.6 billion budget hole that really has to be fixed. The question was whether or not they were going to try to fix it this year, that $1.6 billion, or have to come in in a special session. You can't do it in the 2018 regular session because it is a special, it is a regular session of which you can't do fiscal matters, and you can't raise taxes and other, other revenue raising measures. So a lot of talk this session has been about, around whether or not there would be a plan coming together. There are a number of tax proposals out there that, that are out there that attempted to address both this fiscal year and the next fiscal year, the fiscal cliff. Unfortunately, none of that seems to be moving. It doesn't. The House Ways and Means Committee passed a number of things out, but quite frankly, I don't think they have the votes on the floor to get most of that passed. Some of the packages require 70 votes, and it is extremely difficult in the current climate up at the Capitol to get 20, 70 votes to do everything, anything on the House side. So there is a, the theory out there is, is that nothing really will happen. They'll fix this year's budget through cuts, and I'll talk a little bit about HB 1 here shortly, which is the appropriations bill. But there really isn't an appetite to do anything just past fixing the current fiscal year budget. And what may come out is the extension of the, if anything comes out right now, it may be the extension of the fifth penny that was added last year. I'm sorry, two years ago. It's set to expire in 2018. The only question is whether or not they move it through 2020 or '21, and would you get it passed the election? Talk a little bit about the, oh, one other thing. If in fact, nothing happens, there'll be a special session. The governor will have to call people in prior to June, well, prior to the regular session of 2018. So we're looking at a September, sometime a fall special session, if not fall of 2017, early 2018, to run right into the next special session. Again, that will be to address the $1.6 billion cliff that we have, that we have to find revenues and cut the budget, either cut the budget or find revenues for. Go, a couple of bills that we'll talk about- Go, a couple of bills that we'll talk about. HB1 is the appropriations bill. The House passed a bill that made significant cuts to healthcare. It's really what they call a standstill budget with a cut, because the standstill budget, it would be, in effect, leaving everybody where they were last year. This year, they decided to only appropriate 97.5% of the dollars that are available to them. The Revenue Estimating Conference says this is what will be available to you next year, and this is what they normally spend, 100% of that. The House Republicans primarily decided to do 97.5% of those available dollars in an effort to try to, to stop having mid-year budget cuts. So they kept some money in there available because they're always concerned about the Revenue Estimating Conference not actually being very precise with their revenues, with the revenue forecast, which then requires mid-year budget cuts when the revenues don't meet that. So that's why they did a 97.5% cut. I would look at that budget right now as a suggestion. It is normally the Senate that actually kind of restores things and, and to where they ought to be. The governor at one point said he would be fine with at least allocating 98% as opposed to 100% of the budget, but not when you have such critical needs in the state. And it's when we have a more stable tax source, tax basis, when he would go to 98%. So I'm sure the Senate will probably bump up the, the amount from the 97.5% funding to 100% funding, which adds about $236, $237 million back into the budget that they are allowed to spend. So HB1 has passed the House. It is over on the Senate side. They will start meeting next week, actually, Monday through Friday. They'll start having meetings on HB1 to construct what the Senate thinks the budget should look like. Most likely, that will end up in conference, and then six people, three from the House, three from the Senate, will make the determination as to what that budget ultimately looks like for an up or down vote by both Houses. That's it as far as the money bill. As you've talked about already about HB2, which is the, which is a capital outlay bill, is still in Ways and Means, that has not started to move. I think we'll have opportunity to put the, the remain as a priority back into that, into that bill, or into that bill, once they start taking up amendments. So it's, it's not too late on that one. Some other bills that you may be of interest. House Bill 34 by Representative Pugh is a bill that does a one, one-board bill in effect, gets rid of Regents, gets rid of all the higher education boards, and combines it into one board. But it's just not an appetite for that bill at all, even with those who have supported it in the past. Quite frankly, I think Representative Pugh understands that and continues to delay and delay the bill as much as he can. It looks like it may be heard next week, Tuesday. We'll see if he actually comes and actually brings the bill. He understands it, it's not probably going anywhere, even if he could get it out, out of committee, which I doubt if he can, but if he could get it out of committee, it would, it would suffer defeat on the floor. I think that's another 70-vote bill. Representative Broadwater had his bill, House Bill 113, dealing with being able to, giving you the management boards the authority to set fees, not tuition, but fees, and extend that you currently have that, that, that authority. His bill extended out for another three years. For some reason, they will not give it to you permanently as his bill originally asked for, at least on the fee structure. But they just, they extended it out for another three years. An interesting bill that came up was Representative Pierre's bill. They dealt with, basically banned the box on college applications. It did not allow you, his bill would have required management boards to not, or to require the institutions within the management boards not to have a provision on their, or a question on their application for admission whether or not you have been convicted of a felony. They had a lot of good testimony in committee relative to that. That bill unfortunately failed, but one of the things that was pointed out was that each management board on its own can make that decision if this board was interested in not having that question on the, on the application. One of the, it's actually interesting, the discussion you just had relative to the consolidation of, of different services is also the subject matter of Representative Edmonds' bill, House Bill 133, except that he is looking at doing consolidation, centralization, just trying to look all the words he used, collaboration amongst all of the, the management boards themselves. So what, that process that you've just gone through, kind of your back office, he's looking at trying to get the universities to maybe have one central IT, one central purchasing department, one central personnel, HR department for all universities, for all higher ed. That's his bill. That bill's actually moving, and I think it's scheduled for a, scheduled for a floor debate on the 17th of, May 17. One last bill I'll talk about, because I'm longer than I thought it would be. House Bill 528, which is Broadwater's bill. That bill, originally Representative Broadwater had a bill to just get rid of the Board of Regents altogether and provide a lot more autonomy to the, to the management boards. Not just autonomy, but not, but, so you could set, not a lot more, I think just about total autonomy for all the things that you do on the campuses. Board of Regents obviously did not like that bill, and he actually ended up compromising it with his House Bill 528. That bill, what creates the Louisiana Post-Secondary Education Board of Trustees. And it's, if you look online, it's House Bill 528. That bill, it's not the actual language that will be in it. What they did was just pass it in concept, and what this will do is allows the management boards to have a lot more say into the, into the how, into the formula itself, the higher education formula. Not directly in, in developing the formula, but it will require the manage, in effect, the management boards or this Board of Trustees to vote up or down on the, on the formula, as well as go back and tell, be able to tell Regents, no, we want you to go back and do it. He is consisting of the, the broad constraint, the broad part, I guess, just a, a, a broad paintbrush of what that bill would look like. It would still allow the Board of Regents to develop the formula. The Board of Regents, the Board of Trustees would review the formula and either approve it or not approve it. It'd be made up of seven members. Each of the management board would have a, would have a member on the board. Yeah, each, each of the former, higher education management boards would have one member, one member appointed by the governor, one member appointed by the Senate, one member appointed by the House. So it'd be seven members. Primarily in his bill, though, is that it would require five of the seven members of the Board of Trustees to vote up or down on the, on the, on the Regents' plan for the formula. So as we've told you before, the formula is going to be and continue to be extremely important. It would take a constitutional amendment to take, to wrest that authority away from Regents, and so that's why he backed off a little bit and came up with this process, which will allow some, some say in how it's done, and Regents then will have to do it in coordination and with, with all the higher education boards. There's some other bills out there I can talk about, but I know that, as I said, I'm trying to be as brief as I can, but it's thorough as I can. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham. At this time, we will move to the Assistant President's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like to begin my report by first asking Mr. Roman Banks, the Athletic Director for SUBR, if he would come forth and share with the board some recent developments as it relates to the university's progress toward fulfilling APR requirements for the NCAA.
Good evening, Madam Chair, President, members of this body. Indeed, it's been a pleasure this week to bring to you guys some, some good news. We are all getting ready to go to regional rules. We have probably about 25 staff members here at Southern University that we're mandated to go to and fund the NCA every year for training. And I was just telling Trevion, the last time that we were there, the last two years since I have been involved with the process, you know, they were talking about us and using us as examples of what not to do. And, and we kind of took a lot of punches. It was real embarrassing to sit in there, and, and then this session, they'll come up and they're using us as case studies. But two years later, the good news is that, we had good news. They are using us now as the poster child to return and recover about how you handle APR and get past unusual data band. And so that's great news for us to be on the upside for a change, where they actually sent out a press release about the great turnaround of Southern University Athletics as it relates to our APR scores. You know, we started this race with three teams on the eligible postseason play, and now we're up to 10 teams, and that's the biggest turnaround in NCA history on, in this short period of time. So I think that's a worthy note. We, we currently have five teams that would not pay, play for postseason play, but we knew that going in because of the struggle that we were under with their lower APR scores. But we do feel like next season that we'll have all 15 teams eligible for postseason play. These coaches have done a great job. Even the teams that are very low, we had great and tremendous improvement within the APR scores, over 100 points. So that's, that's very good to know. And we will continue to do the best we can. We are also on the athletic tour. We just left Southeastern University, where we took the senior staff to go look at the better practices so we can bring it back here and return and make sure that we are doing the right things to make sure that Southern stays in the forefront and we on top of our business for our student athletes. We have a development of our new Academic Athletic Center that we're working on right now, that has given great reviews by the NCA. There was a recommendation that we need to do something and set something aside. So from Dr. Belton and this great body here has really given us everything that we need to equip us. So the old Mini Lab, maybe in the old financial aid building at one point, we are now improving that to be the new Academic Center. So that put us in the game across college athletics across this nation, and that's gonna be a huge win for us. And also, we're on our way, just left Southeastern. We have McNeese and Northwestern State to go do our tour with to make sure that we are continuing to do the right thing, the new practices. And the last thing, season tickets are available for football season. We are down to five, under 5,000 season book holders. And I can remember at one point, we used to be almost 15,000. And so we need to make sure that we have a great push. So what are you doing? We, for the first time, we have our season books out there earlier than we ever have. We are now going through a whole transformation point of you can buy your tickets, not season books, but during the year, because we're a little bit too late. We're working on it and financing it. But you will be able to print your tickets out at home and be able to come to a football game or a basketball game or whatever and have yourself scanned in. That's probably about a $60,000 investment that we had to make to make sure we bring ourselves up to the 21st century. So we're doing everything in our power. We're gonna continue to do the best we can because it's real important that we do the job for our student athlete, because after all, this turnaround has basically been by student athletes being resilient. They could have thrown in a towel, they could have quit on us, but they stayed with us, they kept the course, and our coaches basically have done a great job in following the format and the leadership of this department, and I want to say thank you to all here. There should be a lot of other staff members behind me because I feel less strongly about the support that they've have given. And we're gonna do the best we can to continue to represent Southern University in a profound way. Thank you.
How, how much are the season football tickets?
We have books as cheap as eighty something.
Don't start with the cheap one, always start with me at the top.
Start at the top.
We got to learn the things big, always start at the top and then let them come down.
Our, our most expensive book is nothing, is less than $200 for the year.
What? Man, what you talking? I think, so why don't you send that to all board members, because like me, I didn't know. So why don't you send that?
And what we, with the athletic, we have worked very hard. We have Mr. Neese in marketing have gone out, and for the, for the people that buy the most books, we're putting in a raffle for new season book holders where you can earn up to $1,000 for, for a trip to Vegas. And so that's kind of a promotion that we're doing right now.
If I'm on a, if I'm on a, if I'm in a vehicle with you going to Vegas, something wrong. Broke my mouth, that's what broke my mouth.
We recognize Mr. Rutherford.
Mr. Banks, I think I speak for the whole board in appreciatively acknowledging, I know the massive undertaking that, that the department has had done to go in trying to get us in terms of riding the ship from the APR perspective. And I was very pleased to see the local media give us some appropriate billing for that because we got enough on the other side of that. But I'm glad to hear you mention the season book piece. I, I bet you I've been a season book holder now for about, almost 25 years. And although I don't sit in my seats, I have still purchased them. In fact, I've got Mr. Clayton, his, gave him two of my seats. I don't know if he's still buying them or not, but he probably is. But I wanted to offer again publicly, and I think you and I may have had a conversation about this, but I know Dr. Belton and I had a conversation about it, and we discussed it extensively at one of our foundation board meetings, where we offered to fund a study as to why people are not buying season books. All right? Because at one time, you are right, we were, we were, we were at a pretty good clip. I don't know whether or not it's the parking situation. I don't know whether or not it's the total game day experience. I don't know. Maybe you have the answer to that already. But I want to again, public, because it is a brand, it is a revenue, it is a potential revenue generating source that I don't think we are fully leveraging. And I think we can do it, and this is not a criticism. I think we can, I'm glad you're focused on this, but I really believe we can do a much better job of leveraging that football brand. It's the long pole in the tent. And I again want to publicly extend to you the opportunity to work together and potentially fund some kind of external assessment where we engage our constituency and fan base to see why in fact people are not buying their season books.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Clayton.
Can you answer that, Madam Chair?
Oh, okay.
You know, we have, I don't, I can't tell you 100%, but if you go back and look at, ticket sales started declining back five to seven years ago, really bad. And, but I do know that, and I don't want to put blame anywhere, but I do know that over the past, we look at when we started going, getting in penalty structures. I think there were loss of confidence when, when the state higher ed took a hit. There were several things that you could start seeing a declining mode. I also look at when the tickets was increased several years after it started declining. But, you know, I look at what we can do in-house. And I will say that as an athletic department, there were several things that we didn't do. Advertising. You have to spend money to get some patrons there. I'll give you a case in example, what, what I'm talking to you about is that you couldn't call over the phone, or you couldn't call over the phone and perhaps get a ticket like I'm telling you to do right now. It took a process for you to do something and then come back two days later, then come back and get a parking pass. back and get a parking pass. It wasn't anything all-inclusive. Matter of fact, if you bought a ticket, I didn't even know you bought it, we weren't even keeping any data on you that we can turn back and return and send you an email about what's going on next. So it wasn't any interaction with our fan base and with our customers. And so as it relates to historically what's been going on, these are some of the things that we could do right now in the modern, to be honest with you, our season ticket holders, most of them are 55 and older. And so there's a generation gap that we must reach, young professionals. And so during this period of time, that's all emphasis as it relates to our study and looking at the trend of what's been going on here. And we're trying to invest, I mean, just think about it, nobody don't go to buy tickets anymore at a local place too often unless you owe the person. They print them out from home. We haven't had that ability, use your phone, come in there and scan them, get them in. That's going to cost us $60,000. But if we're going to invest and try to get our fan base back, these are some of the things that we must do. And then I tell them all the time, as we have our appeal to Jaguar Nation, times have changed. You're going to have to be, you're going to have to be willing to change with time along with us and invest into your university.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to commend first the President and his administration and then you. I think that this is one of the many shining stars that President Belton, I've single-handedly watched him go to work to fix this APR stuff with you. And that I think the President, much as I'm hard on him on stuff, should be commended on this one because the two of you collectively fixed this deal. And that's awesome in a short period of time. Mr. President, I think you should be commended on that as well as your new AD. And thank you guys for the hard work.
Any other, oh, Dr. Torb.
Strategic plan for the athletic department?
Yes, sir. We have, well, we have, and that gets into a lengthy conversation, we have a short-term plan and a long-range goal. And we are right now in the process of visiting the other campuses that we are going on. We are tweaking it so we can have a plan to put out in front of that makes sense for Southern University. We've been over and talked with LSU a little bit, but LSU is not on the same plateau we are on. So I don't really want to get into apples and oranges with them. We want to get into the apples and oranges with the McNeese's and the Northwestern's and Lafayette where it makes sense to what we need to do to make our long-term goals viable. And I say this, and put it on your mind, long-term goal may be getting out of Southwest Athletic Conference.
We can do it tomorrow.
The reason I asked that question, I was thinking about the offer that you extended via the foundation. Perhaps the foundation could help support the development of that long-term plan if you're not already involved in that. You mean that would... Sure. But that basic server you were talking about could lay the foundation for sister plan and that plan then would give us a roadmap in terms of where we should be going with our athletic program. That's all I thought. And even go beg the foundation to pay for it.
Yes.
I'd just like to make a statement because I think AD Banks made mention of the fact that the challenge that we've navigated for as many as four years has been one that that where its origin was steeped in issues across the campus, not necessarily the athletic department alone. And I wanted to really as well congratulate the staff across the campus for engaging in additional training, but more so responding in a way that meets the requirements necessary for us to be in compliance. I further though, in light of the efforts of many, coaches, ADs before and after, I definitely wanted to offer my congratulations to Coach Roman Banks and Trevion Scott for their diligence. I have had many conversations with representatives of the NCAA and it is clear that they have confidence in the leadership of AD Roman Banks. And in terms of their confidence and some middles of Trevion Scott. And so I do think that we are in a good place right now in many ways as in response to their leadership. So I too just wanted to offer my congratulations for where we are. We still have a long ways to go. But certainly I think you should be commended for your work.
You and your staff.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments? I'm sorry, Mr. Fundel.
Turn your mic on.
Okay. But just want to commend y'all, you and also Mr. Scott. What a lot of folks here may not know is they spent a lot of hours above and beyond the regular hours that they're here. Both of these men have families and they've, I can remember the top floor at the field house being full of paper from one side to another and having to go through all of that. So it's been a daunting task over the last couple of years, but all the hard work has actually paid off and this is just a reflection of what it is to put in the work. And I also just want to commend you guys, you've done a great job. You and Mr. Scott also, and entire staff over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, may I continue my report? Oh, sure. Yes. And please indulge with me on my presentation this afternoon. I would also like to apprise the board of the work of the Innovation and Development Committee. That committee convened on Wednesday of this week. I see Mr. Alfred Horrell in the back. He serves as the chair of that. I was wondering if you could just come up briefly and just kind of summarize that meeting and direction that we're trying to go in.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of board. First, I'd like to publicly acknowledge our President and our Chair Lady for developing and forming this committee. The purpose of this committee is to give leadership or some measure of oversight to the development of a brand-new master plan for the Southern University Baton Rouge campus. At our meeting, we discussed a number of discussion items in terms of doing studies for our academic units as well as developing financial performers and doing some constituent surveys to get the plan moving in a positive direction. This was all made possible because we were able to secure funding to the tune of about $1 million from the Baton Rouge Area Foundation to support the development of this plan. In 2009, this body supported a plan that cost the university roughly about $250,000. That plan was put together by Ray Manning Architects and is currently in place. So our committee has about 10 to 12 meetings scheduled throughout the summer and we plan to move forward with the development of the plan and to keep you apprised of our progress. You will all receive minutes from that meeting from Mrs. Banks and you will be able to be able to ask any questions that you have of the committee at that time. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Horrell. And that effort will be ongoing and it's my understanding that that committee made up of members of this board will be meeting twice bi-monthly to engage in their work. Madam Chair, with your permission, I'd like to just continue with a couple of updates. One, Mr. Kevin Cunningham made mention of the due diligence of the legislature. During our retreat, you may recall that we had some further discussion about Southern University, some of the limitations that it has, in part because of the mandated emission standard that it must currently be guided by. I should inform you, and I think Board Member Fundel sought an update on where we were in terms of the discussion that Representative Bowie had advanced. I just wanted to just give you just a brief update suggesting to you that we are currently having ongoing discussions with the Board of Regents who I should share has been very receptive as we've begun to discuss possibly revising the emission standard for both SUBR and SUNO. To date, we have secured the emissions standards of HBCUs in the SWAC and the MEAT and looking at some additional HBCUs, both in the, both private and public, just to gauge their standard. And we are finding that many of the institutions have both unconditional standards, conditional standards, but most, if you will, are, their range tends to be around 16 to 18. So we are hopeful that by next week, we would be in a position to shape a standard to which we believe would enable Southern University to be competitive with the superior institutions, but more importantly, a standard that allow us to continue to advance our traditional mission of hosting students, both who are high-performing but both who are a traditional and who represent our longstanding value of access and ensuring success at the end of the day. I also wanted to just kind of give you or advise you of the ongoing investigation as related to, as related to a petition that sought from the administration to investigate the Division of Student Affairs in keeping with a number of allegations that was highlighted. And so in terms of a progress report, I'd like to just share with you that the investigation has been initiated. It is being facilitated as I speak. I am, I have been advised that in terms of where we are in the investigation, that the documentation that the reviewer has sought, has been reviewed thoroughly. And for the most part, the documentation review has been completed. There, the next step, as I could appreciate it, is one where the reviewer will begin interviewing staff members and students as to reaffirm, as to seek additional clarification such that they can make an informed determination as to the allegations. And then finally, it is my understanding that we are moving in such a pace that we should anticipate a finding or a report possibly within the next three weeks. And we are hopeful that we will be in a position then to offer clarification and a final report within that timeframe. And then lastly, Madam Chair and members of the board, I'm certain you are aware that Dr. Brown's last day is essentially today, Dr. Christopher Brown. And I wanted to, over the course, since we've last met, I am aware that many segments of this community has embraced Dr. Brown in informal meetings to try to celebrate his presence and his contributions to Southern University. I believe he begins his appointment with Kentucky State University on Monday of next week. And I wanted to just submit in this public forum, my appreciation for his services to Southern University. I genuinely believe that we have benefited much from his experiences and the degree to which he has exercised leadership throughout this institution. We are better as a result of his presence and I'd like to just wish him well in his new appointment at Kentucky State University.
Dr. Brown, I'm going to ask you a question that I said I wasn't going to ask you, but I'm going to ask you that question. Since you've been here, what was your biggest failure at Southern and what did you learn from it? You don't want me to hear you. Tell them.
Well, one, I've had a great staff and I thank our children for their support. I think the one regret, which we've already talked about, is that we did not move as aggressively in some personnel areas and academic affairs. We looked at our recent commitment program and we've had change, almost like Dr. Belton has, all new chancellors. We have all new deans in this university except in a few places. And almost similarly with department chairs, I was talking to Dr. Tarver. We all know, you know, challenges we've had in chemistry. We've got new leadership in chemistry. You know the challenges we had with Dow, we've got new leadership in engineering. And I think those things have made a difference. And what we do know, supervisor Franklin, that there are some areas that we did not get our work completed. And I wish I'd been more aggressive in taking those challenges on for the benefit of the students and for the benefit of the institution.
Thank you, man. Appreciate it.
Okay. Do we, I recognize, again.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I wanted to say just a couple things briefly. Again, want to again thank Dr. Brown for the work that he's done here. And I think he's made a tremendous imprint. And you know, in the terms in the preaching business, guy come in, do good, we tell you, you can come back again. And certainly want to commend you, not only just the work, but the spirit, the way he carries himself and those around him and everything. And certainly, we're going to be looking forward to working with him still through Kentucky State because we are all still in this same business together. But two more things I want to touch on the President before you come. And it's just me, maybe just me, I grew up on a plantation and I think because of that, I may be carrying some scars still. But I have a trust factor when it comes to some things. And as it comes to the Innovation Committee, I hope this million dollars doesn't cost us more than we intend. I have a sermon that I preach, say, "Don't mess with sin. It'll take you further than you intend to go, keep you longer than you intend to stay, and cost you more than you intend to pay." And I would say to those on that committee, make sure that that doesn't happen to us with this Innovation Committee, that this million dollars doesn't... I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a legal man, just an old preacher. But I think we perhaps have set a bad precedence. Had I been having mistakes, we wouldn't be having investigations. The reason I say that is because what happens on the Shreveport campus when we have the same issue raised, what happens when we have the same issue raised on the New Orleans campus? Are we going to go out having these kinds of investigations every time somebody chooses social media to go out and attack one of our people and do it in a vicious way? Are we going to just go there and investigate it? It's just my personal point of view, Madam Chair, and I just wanted to make that known. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Reverend Tauber.
Reverend?
Dr. Tauber.
She's tired. It's been a long day.
I'm sorry, Reverend Tauber.
I got you.
I wanted to address my remarks to, first, to congratulate him and wish him well on becoming the President of Kentucky State. I know that's an awesome responsibility, and I know they're looking forward to the leadership you can provide. And you bring to that campus a wealth of experience, your history, your background, your platform, your intellect, your knowledge, and it will be missed here, as I'm sure it will be appreciated there. Want you to know that Southern University is a very special place, and I hope that you remember us fondly. And anytime you have bad thoughts about our friend to the far left, just give me a call, and I'll try to rectify that if I can. But thank you so much for everything. Appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Ral.
I share my remarks made by Dr. Tarver and Dr. Brown, and I certainly wish you well. As it relates to the investigation, Dr. Belton, am I to understand that the Board will receive a written report of the findings?
It is. That is my understanding.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Fandell.
Also, to Dr. Brown, Dr. Brown, thank you for the job that you've done over in the Academics Department. I know that, you know, a lot of good things have happened, so I just wanted to concur with the, you know, with the other Board members and say thank you also. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bartholomew, do you have anything to say as a result of your first meeting? They're usually not this long.
I hope you're held back.
Oh, he'll be back. He loves Southern, he said. He said he loves Southern.
Some members are challenging. Some people are very graceful, and they'll pull the punches. But overall, I think at the end of the day, it becomes a very positive relationship on the Board. I mean, what's said is said, and what's over is over, and that we have that relationship, I see, to develop a positive relationship among this Board. And also, the staff itself, I mean, it's very, not often that you have opportunity to see people that's on the same page, the same link, from the President to the members of his staff, understanding what the mission is and what they're trying to accomplish. That little time I was here observed that, and I really want to appreciate y'all for that. And Dr. Brown, we only met about one or two days, two days, yesterday, the other day, and today. I kind of thought I wasn't going to be able to see you for a while. I didn't think you was moving up. But we're going to get together and take him for a ride. We're going to take you for a ride down in Vemiside.
No, no, there's one road, one way.
But again, my best wishes to you, and I'm sure you were doing an excellent job. But Southern will be here, and if things arise that you want to move, always come back home. I have no regrets with that. Always do as well.
Thank you.
I have a promotion to keep you if the President is seconded, so.
You're out of order, Mrs. Clayton.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam. I apologize.
We're going to have a quick, quick campus reports quickly, and you can summarize them. And then our final comments of this meeting will come from Ms. Franklin. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I can only wish you a good night. President.
I can hear you.
Talk through, you're on. You're on.
Hello? Okay. Dr. Disarmans had to rush back for a hooding ceremony coming on this evening.
You're on again.
Okay. The report is as presented, and we just want to invite you all to a commencement exercise coming up tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. at the University of New Orleans Arena at 4:00 p.m. The procession is exactly at 3:45 p.m. The highlight of the occasion will be the confinement of honorary degree to Kathleen Johnson, the NASA mathematician. We are looking forward to that. I know we are not discussing this this evening, but we just want to express our excitement at the way our completers and graduation rates are coming up. We'll be graduating 526 students tomorrow, which is a little bit above the 514 we graduated last year. And for the first time, our graduation rate has hit 20%. It's low, but this is the highest, we went down the statistics, it's looking like the highest for over 15 years. It's low, but we are extremely pleased with how we are coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. We're ready. We're ready for Sussler. Dr. Ellis.
Good afternoon again. The report for Sussler is enclosed. I would like to acknowledge and invite everyone out to our commencement ceremony on this coming Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. We have approximately 413 graduates. Also, would like to invite you all out to our annual fundraiser, the Gentleman's Clicking Classic, on Saturday, June 10th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Thank you, Dr. Ellis. Dr. Field.
Yeah, my report is in your document, and it is what it is. I would, I would like to point out, though, that eight months ago, you hired me and challenged me with getting the RFP out for the Marijuana Initiative. I'm pleased to report to you that it is public knowledge now, it's on the street, and we're moving very swiftly forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Field. Chancellor Pierre.
Yes. Good afternoon. You have our board report. Again, I want to also invite everyone to the Southern University Law Center commencement, which will be tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. in the F.G. Clark Activity Center, and our speaker will be Judge Sean DeStone, Second Circuit Court of Appeal, and the daughter of the former president of the Southern University System, and actually, a group of first students that started at Southern University 70 years ago. And we are completing the celebration of what we call our Charles Hatfield Year. So, this will be one more activity in that process. I also want to thank Madam Chair, Vice Chair Henry, and Dr. Davis, and Mr. Rutledge for coming out to our legislative reception on Monday evening. It was a great success, and we appreciate that. And again, as I said out to the Board, just like SUNO is making great progress with respect to graduation rates, we are making continuous progress in our bar results, in our February results. We made history on several fronts. We outperformed LSU. We actually outperformed the other institutions collaboratively in the state of Louisiana. Our actual passage rate on first time and cumulative was above the average the state for the in-state schools. So, again, we're making progress despite the fact that our tuition is a lot lower than theirs, and we're willing to take risk on students that they are not willing to take. And so, this is, again, part of the legacy of creating access and opportunity for individuals who might not get those opportunities, and again, having a transformative effect on their lives. And we see those examples each and every day, and it's reflected in the, in the work that you see in Ms. Jordan Franklin, who is a fine example of what we do at the Southern University Law Center. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chancellor Pierre. And I would just like to say, I would like to say at his reception, he had facts, I guess it was probably 30, 40 more facts surrounded on the table downtown, and it was all about Southern University. It was wonderful.
I confess, there was a fact of my colleague of mine who's a remain major. I'm not going to say his name, but I took it. I'm still a doctor and I'm working on it.
I haven't seen it. The chair showed me a picture of it. Trust me.
It was very positive for Southern, not just the Law Center. He had positive facts all over his table, and it was about the entire structure of Southern University. And almost all of them were within the last six months. So, it was wonderful. Thank you. Now, we're ready for Dr. Brown.
Yes. The Southern University Baton Rouge Report is included, but we would like to highlight that we bid it on a $1.5 million joint project with the State Higher Education Executive Officers, and, which is called CIO, to increase the number of African-American males in teacher education. Southern University has been successfully named the partner for the state of Louisiana. The principal investigator has now been transferred over to Dr. Laurel Young, who will lead that in my absence. The head of CIO, Joseph Rallo, from Board of Regents, Denise Pearson, all visited the campus about two weeks ago, and Dr. Belton hosted a day-long meeting, and we signed that initiative. And so, for the next three years, we'll be partnering to increase the number of African-American males in teacher education.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. And now, we are ready for, Vice Chair.
On behalf, well, before I do this. I just want to say thank you to Dr. Brown and much success at Kentucky State. Enjoyed working with you. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we have a huge token, I don't like to say a small token, a huge token of appreciation to our President for his birthday on last week. We just want to say happy birthday to you. Thank you. I would say that his time has been well spent.
It is. And now, we have Ms. Franklin.
Before you go to the last person, can I say something?
Yes.
To you, Madam Chair, and to all the mothers out there across the country, Jaguar, Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you.
I'm always going to give that again, Dr. Gaines.
I'm going to say this before she makes her final comment. There were several people that I recognized in the audience and around the table that took a part in yesterday and day before yesterday's festivities with Dr. Tarver and Dr. Iggy Gary with, you must say his name. I don't know, but will you just give them a, give them a briefing of what you did?
We've simply rededicated the new Nelson Mandela College of Government and Social Sciences, which was previously named the Nelson Mandela School of Public Policy and Urban Affairs. The speaker was the South African Ambassador to the United States, who had been here previously a couple of years ago in another rededication ceremony in that building. He's Ambassador Malango and his wife, housed in Washington. And on this trip, thanks to some of our friends close to the governor, we had an opportunity to have an audience with the governor to talk about higher education interactions between the two countries, universities within both nations. But we also talked about trade agreements and to explore economic development opportunities involving our universities, as well as industry and business in Louisiana and in South Africa. I think in last evening, of course, for some of you, we had the reception at the White House, once again, to say farewell to Ambassador Malango, and you heard him at graduation today. Sure, you'll appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. And we're ready for you, Ms. Jordan.
Super brief, for the sake of time, but I, again, wanted to thank the Board for this opportunity. I've had a blast working with you all. Chancellor Pierre, thank you for all of your guidance. Vice Chancellor Rodereck White, he's our advisor for the Student Bar Association. So, I thank him a lot, too, for his guidance and his help throughout my matriculation, especially as SBA President. It's been a tough, tough year. Mr. Clayton, I will be calling you. I need a couple multimillion-dollar settlements to pay these loans back. But again, thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege, and hopefully, y'all can come to graduation tomorrow. But thank you so much again.
Thank you. And may I get a motion to adjourn? And it has been moved and seconded.